Welcome to the San Rafael City Council meeting of September 8th, 2020. We'll, uh, we met in closed session and I'll ask if there's any, was any reportable action.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the public, members of the council. There was no reportable action taken in closed session this evening.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney will now turn to the city manager's report. Um, except you may have had an introduction. I don't have the, uh, the other, the other sheet. So Lindsay, you may have a statement to make before we go.
Thank you. Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. If I could start by calling the roll and then I'll go into how the public can participate for this evening.
Thank you.
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Present.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Present.
Councilmember McCullough. Oh, he's absent. And Mayor Phillips.
Present.
Thank you. This meeting is being streamed live to YouTube where viewers can provide comments in the live chat or they are welcome to attend by telephone by calling six six nine nine zero zero nine one two eight. And the meeting ID is eight one seven three six nine two zero three three seven. If you are participating over the telephone and you wish to provide public comment, please press star nine when the mayor opens the public comment period. When it's your time to speak, you will hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak and you will need to press star six to unmute yourself. Once you hear the notification that you've been unmuted, you'll have two minutes to provide your comments. If you're submitting comments on YouTube to be read aloud, please write public comments in caps, introduce yourself and submit your comments. Please note that there is a character limit on YouTube, so you'll have to submit your comments in groups. Additionally, if you're planning to speak to the city council on matters not on this evening's agenda, please go ahead and raise your hand now or submit your comments now in YouTube and it'll be coming up soon here on the agenda. If you submitted comments prior to the city council meeting by email or correspondence, it's been forwarded to the city council and staff and it's been published to the city's website with the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Uh, we, uh, uh, we'll start with the city manager's report. Jim.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm trying to go to the right screen that shows that you can hear me, but I'm assuming you can hear me.
You can.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to start with just some of the, our extreme weather related updates. Um, due to the heat and possible power outages, the city of San Rafael opened up a cooling center on Sunday and Monday, um, of this past weekend at the San Rafael Community Center. Um, and a cooling center, we found out during the COVID time is an extra challenge. Uh, rather than just kind of opening up the doors to the community center, we really had to make sure that it was safe for everyone involved. Um, all staff working on it, put it, put it together on a city furlough day that we have due to budget reductions and then ran it on Sunday and Labor Day. So just wanted to let the council know that no matter what the calendar says, staff is always working to support the community. And we're really happy to do it because we served twenty-two people on Sunday and thirty people on Monday. So we had over fifty people taking advantage of the cooling center due to the extreme temperatures that we had in San Rafael. And really throughout our whole region. So I just wanted to bring it up mainly to, uh, thank staff for pitching in and for being there and for, um, helping out and supporting the community during a difficult weather period. Uh, the weather service issued a red flag warning for the North Bay and other parts of the Bay Area, which includes us, um, through eight AM tomorrow morning. So we're still in a red flag warning and that means that critical fire weather conditions are expected, uh, which will be last through this evening. Uh, we were not on PG&E's, uh, power shut off list that was taking place over the weekend that included twenty-one counties and Marin was not one of them this time. Uh, beginning on Monday night or last night. Um, I understand that they did actually take place in some of our neighboring counties, including Sonoma and Napa. Uh, so hopefully we're getting back to some more normal weather after we get through the red flag warning and the extreme temperatures and, um, we can get back to normal, at least from a weather standpoint a little bit, which would be great. Uh, from COVID-19, um, updates. Our overall COVID positive numbers in Marin have been trending downward, which is great. There is quite a bit of concern just about this holiday weekend because we've seen upticks and surges after holiday weekends. So hopefully that, uh, those numbers will not surge after Labor Day weekend. Uh, the big and unfortunate news in the coronavirus front today is that due to a change in the state's methodology, Marin's status, um, would need to stay purple. We thought we were going to move to red. Uh, we thought we were going to move from tier one to tier two today. And that's what the county of Marin and the county emergency operations center thought because they had, the state had indicated that that would be able to take place starting today. They indicated that last week. And then, um, over the weekend, we were notified, actually, I think it was as recent as yesterday or yesterday evening, that the state reversed, uh, their decision and, um, they had been using one methodology to determine what tier each county could be in and had been indicating to us that we could move, but then made the decision, uh, to slightly change the methodology, which kept us in the, in the purple tier. So it was a state, um, decision, but it affects everyone in our community because there were a lot of businesses relying on that. We, we also know that it's a very sensitive issue and information keeps changing, so it's hard to know the right path forward each day for our local businesses. So it's been, extremely frustrating and maddening as we try to support our local businesses. Uh, there are some, um, things that the county is doing about it and county health is doing. Uh, first I'll mention that once we get to tier two, when we move into that level, that allows indoor dining, indoor places of worship, indoor movie theaters at twenty-five percent capacity, or a hundred people, whichever is fewer, indoor retail at fifty percent capacity, indoor malls at fifty percent capacity, indoor personal services, indoor fitness centers at ten percent capacity. So it's something that we've been anxious to get to that tier as we continue to make progress in Marin County. So, um, but we didn't get there right away, um, today based on the, the state's change in methodology. So the county has requested, um, a special adjudication of the order, which is going to be reviewed in the coming days. Uh, we, there was an emergency call late last night to go over this and, um, the, the county is asking if we could stay in, in the current status tier two, uh, until the review is done, but they're messaging right now that, uh, we are in, in the purple tier and businesses need to abide by that until any change takes place. Um, the county's been in kind of negotiations, uh, is what they told us for a mutual understanding of how the numbers will be determined and they're hoping to resolve, um, as soon as possible because this kind of, the back and forth, I think is, is extremely damaging. It's extremely frustrating. Um, and this particular time, it was a, a change from the state at kind of the last minute. So it's something that we're tracking. I know the, the business improvement district in the San Rafael Chamber of Commerce has been very involved in trying, in trying to, both convey their displeasure of the, the state's changing, moving the goalposts at the last minute. But also trying to get the word out to their, to the businesses in San Rafael to make sure that everyone knows what the, what the current status is. So as a city emergency operations center, we remain very focused on real-time outbreak response, like our efforts around supporting COVID testing sites or providing emergency childcare or just distributing masks, for example. But we're also looking forward and trying to focus on the medium and long-term impacts of the pandemic in the coming months and years. Um, the Canal Alliance Legal Aid of Marin and Community Action Marin, uh, sent a letter last week requesting the formation of a Marin County Pandemic and Latinos Policy Task Force, to focus on some strategic priorities around housing, health and local businesses. So that's, uh, that'll be one significant way that we can work with the county and our community organizations as we focus on the medium and long-term aspects of the pandemic. At the state level, as the council knows, Assembly Bill thirty-eight-eight passed and was approved by the governor, which includes a COVID-19 hardship declaration. No evictions for rent non-payment until February first of twenty twenty-one and partial rent repayment, um, over the next five months. Also new foreclosure protection includes small property owners of homeowners, expanding homeowner bill rights and expanded borrower rights. So, uh, we're reviewing that, um, now and looking at the final text that was just signed off on by the governor very recently. Um, so that's gonna, um, be very important for our community as it, as it changes kind of the eviction, the eviction rules, uh, that had been going on as, as the county had been extending eviction moratoriums. I know the county board of supervisors will continue this conversation as well at their meetings this month. Um, also in the same general topic, our canal Wi-Fi project is now up and running and we're working on expanding its range. Um, so that's great news. Uh, also would be interesting to the public to know that our library and recreation department has been partnering closely with the Marin County Office of Education, uh, to provide two different remote learning programs, one of them at the Borro Community Center in the Canal neighborhood and the other at the San Rafael Community Center. So students are going to receive connection support for distance learning and internet access. So I, I won't go into great detail, but just in quick summary. Uh, the Borro Community Center is going to operate five days a week, host forty-eight, um, middle and high school students led by Marin County staff, and thirty elementary school students led by the Marin YMCA. And then the San Rafael Community Center is going to be operating five days a week as well, hosting thirty elementary school students. And then even younger students are going to be accommodated at school sites. So the city of San Rafael is providing the locations, which is a, great way to use our space, um, during the time that we're not fully operating as community centers. Um, and then we're going to provide the internet access facility staff, um, and custodial services, those sorts of things, just to support the programs. It is being coordinated through the Marin County Office of Education, so we are, have, are filled with gratitude, uh, for them to be our partners on this and to be able to use this city space to help out during this time. Um, and there are many other community partners, like some of which I mentioned that are involved, and it's free for families who meet the, the school's criteria. Um, so I'm just going to move on to a couple of quick announcements. Uh, the first one is that, uh, the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority is trying to fill out their citizens oversight committee. Uh, that's the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority was formed last year to develop and implement a wildfire prevention education and emergency preparedness throughout Marin County. It was measure C, which was passed this year, March twenty twenty, even though that seems like that was years ago. Um, so, and that measure funds wildfire protection and prevention services. So the proceeds are through measure C are controlled locally and reviewed by a citizens oversight committee, and that's the committee that they're, uh, trying to put together now. So, there's a deadline of September twenty-third to, for people to be able to apply. And, uh, you can find out more about it if anyone's interested in our community at MarinWildfire.org. It's the main thing on the webpage right now. And then lastly, one other public meeting, uh, we do lots of public meetings, but I just want to hit a couple of highlights because this is a big one on Third Street, the Third Street corridor downtown. There's going to be a significant investment of funds that we got through TAM and MTC, um, uh, our local transit organizations and regional transit organizations, um, to focus on improvements along Third Street. And on September twenty-third at six PM, uh, we're going to have the design firms and staff, uh, available to kind of present an update of what's going on with that project and answer questions. So for now, it's just kind of a hold the date, September twenty-third at six, uh, and then we're going to be getting more information out as, to let people know how they can, uh, participate remotely. There's a place on our, on our website right now to register for the meeting, uh, but we'll be sending out more information just to, so that everyone can participate in an, in an easy way. So that concludes my opening comments and announcements for this evening. I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jim. Thanks for your, uh, excellent report. Uh, we'll now turn to the open time for public expression and opportunity for those that are joining us this evening to share with us your thoughts, recommendations, suggestions, and even a gripe perhaps. So with that, Lindsay, I'll ask if there's anyone wishing to address us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you are participating by telephone and you wish to speak on items not on this evening's agenda, please press star nine. When it's your turn to speak, you'll be notified that I, the host, am inviting you to participate and you will need to press star six to unmute yourself. If you're participating on YouTube, please submit your comments now and note that when submitting comments on YouTube, you do need to write public comment prior to your message if you would like me to read it aloud. if you would like me to read it aloud. So, so we have Tim. Tim, if you can go, there you go. You all have two minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Phillips and members of the council. Thank you for offering me time at your council meeting tonight. My name is Tim Flanagan. I'm here in my official capacity as the chief information officer and registrar voters for Solano County, and I'm here to give thanks. A few weeks back, I received a call on a Saturday afternoon from our emergency operations center, which had been activated to help manage the outcomes of the LNU complex fire in Solano. They asked me to bring up a website to concentrate all of the recovery information possible to help families who had lost their homes. The first thing that I did was, after that call, was to get in touch with Rebecca Woodbury, your director of digital services. I called Rebecca because I was familiar with her work in standing up Sonoma County Recovers and Marin County Recovers websites, and I wanted to get her advice on the best approach to make this happen for Solano. After about 20 minutes of coaching and conversation, she paused and told me that her best advice was to just let her do the work and build the site for Solano. She rallied her team, which included Talia Smith, a senior management analyst, and Christine Foster, a digital services analyst, on that Saturday afternoon. They worked through the night, Saturday, all day Sunday, and even on Monday night in partnership with a proud city vendor and our web development team in Solano. In less than two and a half days, they had a fully functional site ready to publish to serve the over 290 families who had lost homes in Solano County. And so I'm here to tell you today that they did heroic work and deserve to be recognized for it, and I'm here to thank this team. You are a testament to good local government and mutual aid. And so that's it. And so again, thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council for your time tonight. You have an amazing team in San Rafael, and I really, really hope that you're proud of them. So thank you.
Tim, thanks so much.
That's all for my public comments.
We're, like you, most, most proud and pleased with our, our staff, including those that you made reference to, outstanding, outstanding. And thank you for the, for the comment and the recognition. Greatly appreciated. And best of luck to you. Quite a, quite a devastating situation for everyone.
We've got a long way to go, but thank you very much.
Yep. Let us know if we can help.
Okay, once again, if you have called in and you wish to provide comments and items not on this evening's agenda, please press star nine now. I'm not seeing any additional hands raised. And Brenna, can I just confirm with you, Deputy City Clerk Brenna, if there are any additional comments on YouTube?
There are none at this time.
Thank you.
There are none at this time.
Thank you. That concludes pub, public comments for open time.
And a nice comment it was. It's, it's good on all fronts. Staff is to be commended and very much like to take the opportunity to do so. With that, we'll now turn to the consent calendar. Consent calendar, items four A through four D will be covered by a single motion unless someone wishes to have an item held, and I'll start there. Anyone wish to have, any council member wish to have an item held? Seeing no one, we'll turn to public for comment with regard to the consent items. Are there any?
Once again, if you are participating by telephone and you wish to provide public comment, please press star nine now. When it's your turn to speak, you will be notified that the host is inviting you to participate and you will need to press star six to unmute yourself. If you're participating through YouTube, please submit your comments now and please don't forget to write public comments in caps prior to your comments. And I'm going to wait about 15 seconds just to give people some time. I see no public comments for the consent calendar.
Okay, thank you. We'll close public and come back for a comment by council or a motion with regard to this item.
I move the consent calendar.
Thank you. Moving second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Colin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Mayor Phillips.
I matter carries four zero, and we'll turn now to the other agenda item, which is five A, measures to facilitate housing development and streamline approvals. Good evening, Paul. I don't know if Jim is going to chime in on this or go directly to you. Your pleasure.
I'm, we have a lot of speakers here tonight. Good evening, Mayor Phillips and city council members. The community development department's well represented tonight. Joining us are Ethan Guy, Principal Analyst, and also Alisa Judice, Principal Planner, and we have a presentation for you. What's being presented tonight is really focused on housing. As you know, housing is a high priority for the city, and this has been one of many meetings that we've had with the city council on this topic. And tonight, we're presenting an informational report on potential amendments to our municipal code to facilitate development of housing and streamline the approvals. Could you move on to the next slide, please? First, an apology. The staff presentation is quite long. We have, just so you're prepared, about 50 slides. There will be three of us speaking. There's a lot to cover here, and this is how it's been laid out for tonight. I'll be giving a report on the background, which started this discussion over two years ago. Ethan Guy will be covering inclusionary housing and Alisa Judice will be covering these other topic areas, three through five. And then during the discussion and feedback, Ethan will assist in facilitating that effort. Next slide, please. Can move on to the background. Just stepping back, the report that's presented tonight is actually rooted in three past reports that were presented to the city council. I actually can't believe it's been over two years, but we prepared and presented a comprehensive report to the city council on everything you want to know about housing in San Rafael in August 2018. And as a result of that meeting, the city council gave us some direction on four topics to address. The first, renter protection. The second, short term rentals. The third, housing for an aging population. And the, and the last topic, which is part of what we're discussing tonight, the challenges to approving and developing housing. So where we've gone is we, as you may recall, we've come to the city council several times with ordinance changes to address rental protection, particularly with regard to new regulations for just cause eviction and also source of income discrimination. In 2019, we adopted a short term rentals ordinance. We've been operating under that ordinance for some time. There was some reprise here, shelter in place order. Moving on, in September last year, again, it's been a year, we presented a report on the challenges to approving and developing housing. This report outlined our approach, which included interviews with a number of stakeholders, including developers, a lot of research, bringing forward some best practices from other communities, data collection, and we even did a, and completed a, an air rights assessment of city parking lots for the potential of developing housing. And what came out of that report were an identification of 11 challenges, and we also identified 13 recommended measures and actions. Next slide, please. So as a result of that September meeting, the city council asked us to do some outreach, so we conducted two community meetings. Ethan will touch on that in a few minutes. And we were asked to bring forward a work plan on how we were going to address the 13 recommendations. And we returned to the city council in January this year and presented 15 policies to incentivize and streamline housing development. Six of these have been implemented to date. The one that I would like to mention is that you've seen because it's come back to you in the form of a policy resolution, and that is administrative procedures for how we are to distribute the money that we collect in our affordable housing trust fund. That's something that we have completed. In fact, we even tested part of that with the, the Locklom and Marina project with the allowance for a buyout of six below market rate units in their second phase. What's presented tonight are five, five policies that are part of this list of 15. It may seem when you take a look at some of these individually, how are they related? But they are all very related to housing and, and housing development. And then we are working on two of the remaining policies that, that are under development that will be returning to the council in months ahead. So at that point, I'm going to turn it over to Ethan. He's going to cover the next set of slides.
Thanks, Paul. So as part of this report, putting together this report, we did quite a few different kind of layers of community engagement. The first piece was those workshops and the city council meetings that Paul described. So a lot of that work went into the development of this informational report. So we didn't necessarily want to redo a lot of efforts that we've already gone out to the community we've talked to, and instead we wanted to make sure that we were using their input to kind of help craft these policies. So kind of the, the first really unique thing that we did with this informational report is we drafted what was known as a straw man draft proposal. It was essentially a draft proposal of an, of an inclusionary housing ordinance, just to get some feedback, to have some stakeholders react to these thoughts. So that's been included in the staff report. And how we got that feedback was with one-on-one meetings with interested community stakeholders, and that also included presentations to MECC, the San Rafael Chamber of Commerce, as well as a few other representatives in the community. Additionally, we took an earlier version of this informational report to the planning commission on August 11th. And we're, while it was an earlier version, we also included feedback after each policy discussion in this presentation to kind of talk a little bit about what the planning commission said in the reaction to the earlier staff report. Additionally, we conducted, it's a very simple community survey. We partnered with Zen City to conduct it. It was a 10 question survey, and really the idea was that we just wanted to, to get a quick little pulse on, on the community's thoughts on inclusionary housing. It wasn't an in-depth or detailed survey, just a quick little survey to get some information. That was conducted from July 31st to August 19th. It was conducted in English and Spanish and released to the city's newsletter, Nextdoor, Facebook and Twitter. We had 162 resident responses. And the, the key findings from this community survey, the first one is that there remains near consensus from respondents on the need for more affordable housing. 80% of San Rafael residents who responded believe that there is a need for more affordable housing. That's what we saw when we did our earlier outreach, and it still is the same trend that's happening today. Additionally, when we asked specifically about whether or not we should allow for developers to pay in in-lufy instead of providing onsite affordable housing, we got a mixed response. 43% of respondents said no, that they wouldn't want to allow an in-lufy. 36 said that they would allow for an in-lufy, but 19% said that they were unsure. Finally, one, one key kind of finding that we did find was that respondents also supported densers development citywide. Now, we're not talking giant skyscrapers, but what we did find was that most, 42% said that there needs to be more housing and mixed use housing citywide, downtown in the canal neighborhood. But when we asked respondents how they envisioned these developments and we showed them pictures, not necessarily saying two to four unit stories, we just showed them pictures of actual buildings that met that description. 52% said that they would see a two to four story mixed use property as what they envisioned that development. 39% said duplex, triplexes or fourplexes, and 31% said five to eight story town center. And specifically with that town center, we showed them the San Rafael Town Center to get their thoughts on that. So with that, I'm going to shift gears a little bit and talk more about the specific inclusionary housing policy. So currently, the city has an inclusionary or housing policy that's split up into three kind of main sections. There's two to 10 unit properties, 11 to 20 unit properties and 21 plus unit properties. And then we also handle rental and for sale properties separately. For the rental properties across two to 10, 11 to 20 and 21 plus unit properties, we require that 10% of the two to 10 unit properties are required to be below market rate, 15% for the 11 to 20 need to be below market rate, and 20% for the 21 plus need to be below market rate. For all categories in the rental category, half have to be provided for very low income, half have to be provided for low income. However, for, for sale units, while the BMR percentages stay the same, the income levels increase a little bit. So half have to be provided for low income households and the remainder need to be provided for moderate income households. And the reason why for sale has a little bit higher income categories is because of some of the, the initial kind of barriers to entry and the requirements for getting a mortgage and for doing the kind of initial house and for sale purchasing. So that's kind of why you see this little bit of a difference between rental and for sale properties. We also currently have an affordable housing in lufy. The current inclusionary fee is $343,969 per unit. That was set in 2006, initially at $236,000 per unit, but it's adjusted annually to account for inflation and housing and construction costs. And that fee is normally paid at a time as building permit fees. Now, that number reflects what's known as the affordability gap. And the affordability gap is the difference in price between a market rate unit and an affordable unit. So kind of what, what is that cost on the market between those two prices? And it's generally conducted, looking at several different prototypes, several different areas within the city, and there's a study that goes into determining that. Currently though, we only allow for the payment of an in-lufy for fractional units or if a, or if an applicant can establish financial need or project in feasibility. So what do I mean by a fractional unit? Just to take a kind of a simple example, if you have a 22 unit project that has to meet a 20% inclusionary requirement, you would have 4.4 BMR units. Now, since you can't provide 0.4 BMR units, we allow for those 0.4 units to be provided through payment of an in-lufy. And so this is just an example, but for those BMR units, for a project like that, four units that would be provided onsite, two at low income, two at very low income, assuming it's a rental property. And then the developer would pay the in-lufy for the 0.4 units, which would come to about So what are some of the pros to having an inclusionary housing policy? Affordable units are built quickly because they're built as part of the market rate project. They can provide some economic and racial integration, and there's no need of a subsidy from the city to provide those units because they're provided as part of a market rate projects. But there are some cons. That usually produces fewer affordable units compared to a 100% affordable housing project. It doesn't produce units for extremely low income projects. It's usually capped at very low or low. And then finally, reduces project revenues and can, and can potentially restrict production and raise housing cost values. That's that last little piece that got cut off there. Housing cost values often get raised when we have to build units themselves. So what is the effectiveness in affordable housing in lufy? Now, we've talked a little bit about the inclusion area, let's talk a little bit about the in-lufy. So these questions actually came about through the planning commission, but since they're more under the background, we wanted to kind of break them off themselves. So the first question that the planning commission really asked was, are fees effective at producing more housing units? So in a nationwide study, there was a six to one leverage ratio that they found on average for trust fund dollars for affordable housing. So what do I mean by that? So for every $1 of trust fund funding that was used, on average, trust funds got $6 in return. In a study from Seattle, they were able to build three units for every one unit's worth of fees that were paid into their trust fund. And in a very simple analysis that staff conducted, just looking at how much money does an affordable housing project, in this case, I'm referring to, is called a LI-Tech. It's a low income housing tax credit project. A LI-Tech is the main source of funding for affordable housing projects. So when we asked how many, how much money do LI-Tech projects in Marin need from a local or a county funding source to be feasible, that number came out to about $45,000. Within a similar analysis that was conducted in Oakland, that number was about $125,000. So that's different from the affordability gap in that the question that's being asked is how much money is necessary to make a project feasible, not what is the gap between a market rate project and an affordable housing project? So the second question that the planning commission also asked was, does affordable housing need to be provided onsite to be effective at creating inclusive communities? So nearly all available studies looking at this relationship indicate So nearly all available studies looking at this relationship indicated that access to higher neighborhoods is the most important factor. Access to specific market-rate buildings is not the influencing factor. So what do I mean by that? You can have units that are provided onsite within a specific project, but that is not necessarily the most important factor in providing those units. What's important is that there's access to that neighborhood, not the specific building. Finally, the Planning Commission also asked, what are the equity impacts of changing the inclusionary housing requirements? So it's really important that ensuring high housing quality and robust resident services, those things are as important to resident success as the stability that affordable housing provides. Additionally, in a study that was conducted by UC Berkeley, in neighborhoods with higher rates of poverty, LI-Tech developments are providing better housing quality and stronger property management than what is available in the private market. So again, when I say LI-Tech developments, I'm talking about a 100% affordable housing project. So to kind of look into these questions and kind of get a better sense of what's happening in San Rafael, staff in the city had a white paper commissioned to provide some recommendations for San Rafael. As part of that white paper, there were four main recommendations. That the city should provide a buy-write-in-lufi option to fulfill the inclusionary housing requirement. That the city should alter the inclusionary requirement depending upon the development type, the location, as well as conduct further study, and really consider reducing it for ownership units specifically. Additionally, the white paper recommended that we should allow developers to fulfill the inclusionary requirement more creatively and efficiently. So this is where the idea of a menu of options approach has come about. And then finally, that we should set a schedule to review and revise the inclusionary housing ordinance on a regular basis. So one thing to kind of note on what is a review and revise on a regular basis, what does that mean? So generally, market cycles and construction take several years to actually happen. So generally, policies are reviewed and revised on a three-to-five-year cycle. Additionally, as part of that white paper, they provided some best practices. So some of the main two elements of inclusionary housing policies throughout the nation is separating out just a 20% or a 15% across-the-board requirement into two separate areas, what's called a baseline requirement and an additional requirement. So the baseline requirement is a percentage of BMR units required to be provided onsite as part of all projects. The additional requirement are options provided to the developer to meet the remaining inclusionary housing requirement. So what do I mean? What are some examples of those additional requirements? Some of those best practices include four main areas. The first is an additional onsite unit. So this is providing, by option, by the choice of the developer, onsite BMR units that are provided in addition to the baseline requirements. Usually, the jurisdictions in this case provide the developer several options at various depth and breadth of affordability levels. So the depth might be a higher percentage of units, where the breadth might be at a higher income level versus a lower percentage of units, but at a much lower affordability level. Additionally, as part of these additional requirements, there's an in-lufi, which is a per-unit fee paid to the city by the developer. That fee is placed into the trust fund, dedicated to creating more affordable housing. There's also off-site units, which are similar units of economic benefit that are provided at an off-site area. Usually, this requires director approval. And then finally, is what's called a land conveyance, which is developable land that's provided to the city for future affordable housing development. So a good example of a land conveyance of recent is Whistlestop. That's kind of an example of what a land conveyance is. Generally, though, off-site and land conveyance requirements aren't used as much because of the kind of this additional level of review and making sure that they do provide and define what similar economic benefit is. Generally, that they're included, but they're not often utilized because of that additional need for additional analysis. So going on to the policy proposal. Staff's main goal in providing several different scenarios for what our proposal is was really to design a requirement that are simple and transparent. Additionally, we provided three main scenarios. We provided a scenario that was financially equivalent to a 20% BMR requirement, to a 15% onsite BMR requirement, and a 10% onsite BMR requirement. For all scenarios included, they had the below elements. They had, they condensed the project size categories from those three to two. So instead of two-to-10, 11-to-20, 21-plus, we had two-to-15 and 16-plus units. We also included a baseline requirement for all options and an additional requirement for all options. And then finally, to kind of help give a sense of what the impact is, we presented the feasibility of each project. And we analyzed feasibility, not for the small category, but for the low-rise projects because there's such a wide range in a 16-plus unit property. So we provided the feasibility for a low-rise unit, which is 36 units, and a mid-rise prototype, which is 72 units. And we analyzed that for the additional onsite BMR units. And the reason why we only did it for the additional onsite BMR units is twofold. We wanted to make sure that it was easy for people to understand our analysis, but also when setting the equivalence, we made sure to take a look at both the in-lufi and pegging it to that, what the cost and the financial equivalent cost of that additional onsite BMR unit would be. So moving on to the first scenario, which is the 20% equivalent. For the baseline requirement, for two-to-15 and 16-plus, they require a 10% baseline requirement. For two-to-15-unit rental properties, that's low income, it has to be provided for all 10%. But for 16-plus units on the rental side, that's 5% low income and 5% very low income. Now, for sale, that sees that same kind of increase that we saw with the current inclusionary. So while it's still 10% for two-to-15, it bumps up to 5% moderate income for 16-plus units and 5% low income for the 16-plus units. And so whenever I kind of mention that, just kind of think there's always going to be this kind of step up with the income on the for-sale. Now, for the additional requirements, for the onsite, for the rental side, for two-to-15, there's no additional requirement that 10% is the baseline. However, for the 16-plus units, they could choose the option of providing 5% at very low, 10% at low, 15% at moderate income for the onsite. For an in-lufi payment, we pegged that payment equal to 10% of total units. So if you have a 36-unit property, 10% of total units would be that your in-lufi payment is equal to 3.6 units. And then we also have the off-site and the land conveyance requirements. Now, in terms of feasibility, for the low and very low income options on the onsite requirement, the low-rise and the medium-rise properties were not feasible. And we set feasibility at what's known as 15% of profit as it relates to cost. And that was a number that we came to after talking with several developers about kind of what is generally the right idea, is that 15% number. So then, for feasibility for moderate, that was feasible for both the low-rise and the mid-rise properties, when it was at the moderate income level on the onsite. So for scenario two, the only thing that changed from scenario one is that the onsite requirement, we got rid of that 15% and increased it so it was 5% low income and 10% moderate income. And then for the in-lufi, we dropped that from 10% to 5%. And what we see is that now that low-rise property, when it comes to the low-income category, becomes feasible. And then for the moderate income, it maintains both feasible for the low-rise and the mid-rise property. Moving on to scenario three, which is the 10% BMR equivalent, the only changes that we see from scenario two is that we reduced that baseline requirement from 5% low income and 5% very low income for 16-plus units for sale, and 5% moderate on the 16-plus units, and 5% low income for the for-sale, to just 5% low income across the board. But the onsite and the in-lufi payments, they stay the same from scenario two. At 5% total units for the in-lufi payment, and 5% low income and 10% moderate income on the onsite. And what we see is that overall, while we're only presenting the numbers for the low and the very low, for all project categories, the low-rise, mid-rise, low and very low, the low-rise, mid-rise, moderate, they are all feasible at the 10% level. Now, one question that did get brought up after the Planning Commission meeting was that we were approached by several developers with entitled projects about the potential for paying an in-lufi for a portion of their onsite below-market-rate units. And so this is for projects that have already received planning approval, so they usually have an inclusionary requirement already as part of their housing requirement. And so they want to know what potential do they have for being able to kind of be able to pay some of that in-lufi for those onsite requirements? So staff looked at this for both projects that haven't pulled building permits, which is the pre-construction category, and for projects that have pulled building permits, which is the construction category. For the pre-construction projects, there's a lower opportunity cost because the units aren't as far along in the development, so they aren't as realized as a project that has been developed. And there's additional mutual incentives for both the city and the developer. For the city, providing some buyout might help expedite construction of those units, as well as it could provide funding for affordable housing. For the developer, they would be able to have a reduced onsite requirement. However, when you look at the construction category, there is a higher opportunity cost because those projects are closer to being realized. And because of that higher opportunity cost, that incentive no longer exists. For the city, in order to make up for that high opportunity cost, the city would want to have a high in-lufi, which may make it unfeasible in order to pay that in-lufi. Additionally, the project would already be under construction, so there wouldn't be an incentive to get the developer to bill building permits. For the developer, that fee that needs to be set in order to make up for that opportunity cost might be too high. And then also, if a developer has already begun construction, they're likely have already received financing and may not necessarily need to deal with their project financials. So if the city does pursue a potential buyout for entitled project, staff recommends three things. The first would be allow buyouts only for entitled projects who have not pulled building permits. Second, staff recommends setting buyout amounts of $609,000 per unit, which is the number that we set with the Lock-Lowman project. And it should only be provided for half of approved onsite units. And then finally, put a timeline on those projects. So a project would have to pull their building permits within one year of their agreement if they wanted to take advantage of that in-lufi buyout. So finally, based upon everything that I just said, there were two kind of main takeaways from the Planning Commission. The first was that they were overall supportive of allowing an in-lufi and any policy changes necessary to encourage housing development. Second, they were highly supportive of the proposed policy design, that baseline and the additional requirement, but they did not have a clear recommendation for a specific scenario. So with that, I'm going to pass it on to Ally to talk about the next few policies themselves.
Thank you, Ethan. So I'm going to go over the next few topics, density bonus, possible changes to the structure of the design review board, and then recommended zoning code amendments that will serve to encourage development and streamline approvals of housing developments. Next slide, Ethan. So just to give you background, over the past several years, we've seen a number of changes at the state level related to housing and ways to reduce barriers to housing production. And some of these changes have been related to state density bonus law. Our own density bonus regulations were last adopted in 2010, and so they don't really currently reflect state requirements. And so staff has prepared a list of amendments that will implement changes that have occurred at the state level. And so I'll go over those in a bit, but first, I wanted to start with what those changes at the state level include. Starting with AB 2501. AB 2501 was, became effective in 2017 with, and it basically made several changes. First, it established that local jurisdictions needed to provide clear submittal requirements so that applicants understood how to submit a successful density bonus project, so that they were successful in their submittal. It also established procedures and timelines for processing density bonus applications. So those are required to be part of our zoning code currently. Secondly, it dictated how to treat fractional numbers by specifying that numbers are to be rounded to the next whole number. This applies to base density, meaning that the base density of the, the base density allowed by the zoning district needs to be rounded up. It also established that the number of affordable units required to be eligible for the density bonus should be rounded up. The number of density bonus units should be rounded. Number of replacement units, if applicable, should also be rounded. And then finally, the number of required parking spaces should be rounded. Next slide, Ethan. 2501 also established limitations on the studies that cities could require of applicants. So the ability of local jurisdictions to require feasibility studies, such as proformas, was limited. Waivers or reductions of development standards and concessions are now needing to be evaluated differently. And for the most part, applicants are being asked to demonstrate that the required development standards are impeding their development potential in a physical way. So there are certain waivers that can be, where we can require financial information, such as when an applicant is requesting financial incentives or fee waivers. 2501 also requires that the requested concessions or incentives are automatic or are to be granted unless the city can find that the proposed concessions or incentives do not result in identifiable actual cost reductions, and that the concessions or incentives would result in some sort of environmental or historic resources impact. Next slide. Oh, before I go into AB 1934, there's also no maximum number of waivers, reductions that a development project can request if it actually, if they can demonstrate that it's actually resulting in removing barriers to housing production. So AB 1934 became effective in 2017. This provides an opportunity for non-residential, commercial development projects that enter into an agreement to contribute affordable housing. Development bonuses that include up to 20% increase in height, floor area, and intensity, and up to 20% reduction in parking. And it also allows applicants to request an incentive or an exception to zoning regulations. Next slide. AB 2442 became effective in 2017 as well. And this expands the categories of specialized and supportive housing that could qualify for a 20% density bonus. And these include transitional housing for the youth, housing for disabled veterans, and housing for homeless persons. Next slide. SB 1224 became effective in 2019. This requires cities to grant a 35% density bonus for housing development that would also incorporate 20% of the units for low-income college students. Next slide. AB 1763 became effective in 2020, and this one relates to 100% affordable housing projects. It bumps that 35% maximum that we see in our density bonus tables up to 80% for 100% affordable housing projects. It also eliminates any density limits if a project is located within half a mile of a major transit stop. That means no density limits for housing development of that type. It allows for a height increase of up to 33 feet as a buy-right height bonus if the project is located within half-mile of a major transit stop. It also provides an additional incentive beyond the three that's already allowed within our code to up to four incentives that can be requested by an applicant. And then finally, it eliminates any parking requirements for projects that are categorized as special needs or supportive if the project provides either a paratransit service or is located within a quarter-mile, sorry, within a half-mile of an accessible bus route. So next slide. So to align our code, can you, next slide, Ethan? Do we? I think that's lots, there we go. So to align our code to the changes that have occurred at the state level, this report includes some changes and outlines some changes to Section 14.16.030 that would establish the procedure requirements that are required by the state density bonus law amendments. It would include fractional, rounding of fractional units that relate to rounding of the base units, rounding of the affordable housing units. that relate to rounding of the base units, rounding of the affordable housing units, and any density bonus units, as well as rounding of the parking ratios. It would expand the definition of specialized housing for foster youth and expands concessions and incentives allowed for this type of housing up to a maximum of four concessions rather than the three that are currently allowed by our code. It would incorporate special incentives for 100% affordable housing projects, which include the 33-foot height bonus as a by right if it's located within a half mile of a major transit stop. And would allow the four concessions as well for projects, especially with projects that are, that incorporate specialized or supportive housing. And next slide. It would also incorporate the parking ratios that would be, that would need to be updated to align with the state mandates to include revised parking ratios for 100% affordable housing projects, for specialized supportive housing, for senior housing projects and houses, housing within one half mile of the major, of the major transit stop. And then finally, the proposal would, the amendments would include providing development bonuses for non-residential projects that partner with affordable housing projects. Next slide. Thank you. And so there wasn't a lot of feedback from the planning commission overall. They supported the proposed amendments because they align with the state mandates. One of the comments that we heard from a couple of the commissioners was trying to find a way to make the amendments in a way that would be adaptable. As we have experienced in this last several years, housing legislation continues to change. Even in this last round, we saw, we have seen a number of housing updates. And so trying to find a way to be adaptable so that in the future, if density bonus percentages change or concessions change, that we're able to modify easily. And so one thing that we're looking at is possibly either having an exhibit that outlines the density bonus percentages separately from our ordinance or another option might be to have a separate resolution similar to what we've done with other ordinances such as the small cell regulations. So those are kind of some options we are looking at right now. Next slide. Next slide. So the designer review board subcommittee topic. The designer review board was created in 1970s. Initially, it was intended to provide input on some major development projects in the downtown district and later was brought in to provide input on a wider area and eventually was expanded to provide input on design, product, on design, input on projects citywide. When the board was first formed, it met in a very informal setting, providing solutions in kind of a roundtable format. Design solutions really transpired in real time with the applicant and the design review board really kind of collaborating on design solutions. And it was really kind of a real-time solution type of a format. No notices were sent out. It did not initially involve the public, but over the years, the design review board became more formal and that it began meeting in the council chambers. We now provide notifications similar to our planning commission meetings. Because of this more formal setting, applicants are directed by the design review board to make changes and sometimes come back and result in multiple board review cycles. Because it's not a real-time kind of collaborative effort, the applicant is given direction. And so this can sometimes result in review cycles. Often, the public also takes time to share concerns that are more policy-focused and rather than design-focused. And this can sometimes lead to frustration by the public, but also by the board as they are not able to address policy discussions. So it can lead to some frustration, next slide, thank you, or next slide, sorry. So the intent of the, or the purpose of the designer review board is, is to be an advisory body. They provide design-related recommendations to the planning commission, to the city council, and staff often uses them for smaller projects where we really need that, that input on design solutions. As part of the January 21 housing working plan that Paul was mentioned earlier, the city council discussed potential changes to the structure of the role of the designer review board. And there were three possible options that were presented to the city council at that time. The first one was eliminating the DRB altogether and structuring the planning commission in a way that it would, it would incorporate two design professionals to guide the, to guide and advise the commission on design matters. And this would be basically part of the designer or the planning commission membership. A second option was shifting the role of the DRB to more of a decision-making body. And that would be, the way that would look is that the DRB would have review and approval authority over environmental and design review matters. But the planning commission would continue to serve as a decision-making body on other land use issues such as use permit subdivisions and make recommendations on legislative matters. And then the third option was to appoint a DRB liaison to review smaller housing projects in lieu of the full board. And in the event that there were challenging design issues, the DRB liaison would then have the discretion to refer that complex design-ish project to the full board. And that would be at a noticed public meeting. And then, so all this was presented to your council in January. And then about a month and a half later, we were ordered to shelter in place. And so we had to make some adjustments, similar to what we're doing now. We had Zoom meetings fill in the, as an alternative to in, in council chamber meetings. And then another thing that occurred is we ended up canceling our city boards and committee meetings. However, in order to keep projects moving forward, we temporarily modified the structure of the design review board to be more of a subcommittee structure. So we've been holding sub, designer review board, subcommittee meetings. And what that entails is two willing members. We actually reached out to, to designer review board members. It includes a licensed architect and a licensed landscape architect. We have a very informal, remote discussion. It includes the applicant, it includes the designer and our two members and staff. And this is again like a very informal kind of roundtable discussion where the, where the applicant is provided with feedback and asks questions and solutions are, are created in the meeting. These are not public meetings, they are informal consultations and no notices are provided. The public continues to participate, however, in a planning process when the project moves forward to a more formal noticing action by the decision-making body, whether that's a planning commission or a zoning administrator or even a staff level or director level decision. While that format that I just described is intended to be more of a temporary fix during the shelter in place order, it has worked. It's been effective in providing and giving guidance to applicants. And applicants have really provided positive feedback on how well and successful this has been. Several large projects have been reviewed by the subcommittee recently and in a successful way. So the subcommittee type structure was not included in the earlier discussion in January as part of the council report to the council. However, due to the success of the subcommittee, staff is now proposing this as another option for formalizing the subcommittee concept permanently. Next slide. So the way the structure, the way this would look is that the subcommittee, or it would really be more of a designer review advisory committee, it would replace the full board. It would include one licensed architect and one licensed landscape architect. But we would also have an alternative as a backup. And it would provide professional advice on design to applicants similar to the way we're doing it now. Meetings are not, would not be public, they would not be noticed. But the public would continue to be afforded the same public participation that they, that they benefit from now as part of the zoning administrator, planning commission, or director review of the project. Next slide. So the planning commission did express some concerns about this format. They were definitely interested in the restructuring of the design review board format, but they were concerned about eliminating or reducing a public participation process. This was also a concern expressed by some comment letters that we received by community members. And staff definitely recognizes the effort to improve community engagement that has been part of the city council's priority for a number of years. And some of the ideas that we've been working on separately are ways to improve our outreach through technology. And I'll provide a little bit of more information on that in just a second. Before I do that, I wanted to also mention that the option of creating a hybrid was discussed with the planning commission suggesting that maybe a hybrid of the design review board subcommittee structure with smaller projects would be an option and then providing larger projects to be referred to the full board as a, as a kind of a tiering of the, of the hybrid. And then the other thing that was brought up was the option of reducing the review process for certain smaller projects that are staff level, kind of a staff level review rather than going to the full board and planning commission. So going, next slide. So starting with the, in terms of a staff response to these comments presented by the planning commission, I mentioned that the use of technology that we're looking into. One example that we have explored and continue to explore is a tool that's being used by the Department of Public Works. It's a program called Building Eye. Community members are able to subscribe to Building Eye. They are notified of encouragement permits that have been filed with the city. And they can request to be notified for citywide applications or they can also filter to be notified for a particular area. In this slide, you see that the subscription has been forced just the boundary around the downtown area. But you can, but there, you know, all the different neighborhoods are also options as using this filter. But there's also, you can also kind of designate a certain area within that, within or around your neighborhood. Next slide. And then other filters can be added to include application type, application status, application dates. So there's a variety of filters that you can, that you can choose to kind of check on what applications have been submitted through Building Eye. And this is a tool, like I said, that's being used by Public Works currently. It's not, you know, not necessarily the tool that we may end up using, but, but we, I guess my point is that there are tools that can be used to provide, provide notification to community members on applications that have been filed. And it can be notifications that are going to, that could be done earlier in the process, providing more opportunity earlier in the process for participation. So while we're looking for ways to streamline the review process and remove barriers to housing production in ways that address the needs of our community members, particularly those that have the greatest need, we also recognize the council's other commitments to community engagement and public participation. So regardless of what tool we end up using, we'll strive to continue to do that outreach to community members. Also, I wanted just to mention that this effort isn't, it's not intended to reduce or minimize the review process. This is intended to be more of finding efficient ways to do the work without compromising the city's goals of removing barriers to decent, safe, and affordable housing for our community members while still providing opportunities for participation. Next slide. So regarding the hybrid concept, one of the questions that came up is, would this go far enough in accomplishing the goal of streamlining housing production? And to have the greatest impact, this modification would really need to apply to larger housing productions. That's where we were hearing the most feedback from is that for larger housing projects, the cost of doing multiple reviews, returning to the design review board multiple times through this public process takes time and that time is, can be costly. So while it, the idea of having this kind of a tiered approach is well taken. I think that the staff believes that this would have the most benefit for larger housing projects. And again, the decision-making body, there would be a public process that would be, that would occur during that process. Overdue, next slide. And just looking at the planning commission's suggestion that staff look into the possibility of reducing the level of review for smaller projects is a good idea. Staff has been evaluating our zoning code to look at logical ways to reduce time and, and be more efficient with how we do, how we process applications. So we are looking at that, we'll probably be returning in 2021 with a list of these changes as we continue to look for ways to improve our processes. Next slide. So the next list of changes are include amendments to encourage development and streamline the, streamline approvals, I'm looking to see. I think it's the next slide, Ethan? Oh, that's, you're right, okay. So the city council has given staff direction to look for solutions to encourage housing development. Part of the housing working plan in January, the, was, this was an opportunity to get some ideas with the city council on some possible changes. And the city council provided guidance to staff on ways to continue to look at them and ways to, to look at ways to streamline the review process. So I'm going to go over some of these amendments. They reflect our initial review of amendments. Like I said, will very likely be coming back at a future date with additional changes. But these are just kind of our initial stab. Next slide. So I'll start with this streamline, streamlining hillside development overlay district as exceptions process. The hillside development overlay district was enacted in 1992. It serves as an overlay to the base residential zoning districts in residential hillside areas. Projects in the overlay district need to comply with design requirements. Applicants can request exception to the design requirements, but it's a process. The hillside exception process requires city council decision. This is unusual in that these types of actions, the exceptions, variances are normally delegated to the planning commission. And staff continues to discourage applicants to, from requesting these types of exceptions. However, because it's kind of unusual that this exception process is brought to the city council, staff is proposing that all hillside exceptions be delegated to the planning commission similar to the way we do other exceptions and variances. The decision would still be appealable to the city council, but it would be basically be promoting a streamlined review. And it would be consistent with the way we do things for other exceptions. Relate, so the next item is height bonus. We were, this would just be modifying our height bonus section, section 14.16.190 in a way that would bring forward the height bonus that's allowable by state density bonus law, that 33-foot height bonus that is allowable for 100% affordable housing projects. The next item is small lot development. So our code currently establishes limits on developments for lots under 5,000 square feet in areas that are zoned for multifamily development. Even though there's zone for multifamily development, the provision excludes these lots from being developed, developed at their designated densities. Two years ago, in 2018, staff brought forward a set of zoning code amendments. And one of those were modifications to the section of the code. And at that time, a couple of commissioners asked staff to look into this limitation and explore the idea of eliminating this. And so staff has looked at this, staff is recommending this is a logical, logical solution for providing additional housing within areas that are already zoned for multifamily development. So that's what this amendment is about. And the last item I want to mention is our current appeals scheduling process. Currently, there is no structure to the appeals process in terms of scheduling. Once an appeal is filed, the staff is finding, is finding themselves in an awkward position of trying to accommodate a schedule that is feasible for the appellant, but also works for the applicant. And sometimes it's kind of a battle between the two and it makes, it puts planning staff in an awkward position. So staff, for that reason, staff is proposing amendments to the appeals. So staff, for that reason, staff is proposing amendments to the appeals process section to streamline the scheduling process and establish procedures for scheduling so that it eliminates that juggling that has to occur back and forth, take staff out of the, away from the position of having to make that, that call. It puts it in an ordinance. So next slide. So as we, I just wanted to end with just a comment that as we continue to, we do continue to look for future, for amendments on that, ways that could reduce this or improve the streamlined process and remove barriers to housing production. A couple of things that we are looking at right now, for example, are changes to our accessory dwelling unit ordinance that will facilitate development of accessory dwelling units in line with the state regulations. We're also looking at establishing objective standards for by right applications. And again, we'll continue to look at ways to improve the way we operate and in a way, in a more efficient way. But additional zoning amendments are likely in 2021. And I believe that is it. Oh, the planning commission discussion, for the most part, just supported this, the grouped amendments, and there was really not a lot of discussion. So that, I think, is all I have.
Thank you, Ally. So we're at the home stretch. So to kind of help staff, we, we want to present a few framing questions regarding these policies because there are so many policies and changes that we just went through. So to kind of quickly kind of go through some of these kind of framing questions for discussion. On the inclusionary housing policy, some of the main questions that staff had for council are should the city allow developers expanded options to pay in affordable housing in Lufi instead of onsite units? Another question we had would, should the city move forward with an inclusionary housing policy designed with baseline and additional requirements as proposed by staff? If the answer to that question is yes, at which levels should these requirements be set? The answer is no. How would the city council like the policy to be designed? And then finally, it's that question of buyouts. Should the city allow buyouts for entitled projects? Regarding the density bonus policy, the, the high-level question that we had was whether or not there's comments or concerns about moving forward with those changes. For the formalizing the design review subcommittee, should the city formalize the DRB subcommittee process, replacing the DRB with that design review advisory committee? And then finally, for the kind of package of amendments that Ally just walked through, again, are there any comments or concerns about moving forward with those amendments? So that's kind of our, our way of trying to help, put up some feedback in that the, the city council has the following options to consider on this matter. The first is accept and provide staff direction regarding the proposed changes. Second should be to direct staff to return more information. And then finally, take no action. And so with that, thank you.
Well, that was, that was a very complete and well-thought-out presentation. So first of all, thank you for, for doing so. I'm not going to suggest it was overwhelming, but there was a lot there. And I particularly appreciate your approach at the very end saying, okay, here are some specific, specific issues that we should address. My question of council will be, and then we'll have public comment and go on, but I'm wondering about our process with so much information being provided. It almost feels to me like it would be beneficial to our discussion if we were to take your report, now having been veteran form, to cogitate on that some and come back at the next meeting to, to address some of your issues. I, I don't know if you want to delay it or not, but there's a lot there. Any case, let me open to council questions and we'll open to public comment. First, anyone, any council member, I'm looking for mics, looks like. And three of us fortunately have had some experience with planning commission, having served for several years, let's say. So that helps, but still, I think the report is, is quite comprehensive. Councilmember Bush, I think you have a comment.
Um, my observation is to agree that, yes, this is a, a very wide-ranging report that has a lot of proposals that are very different from each other and more sort of standalone as topics. In retrospect, I think it might have been better if we had addressed each topic and that had staff report, had public comment, and then resolved it and then moved on to the next one. At this point, we have a, you know, list of big policy questions that we need to give feedback on. So the question is, how do we take public comment? Do we want to take public comment on all of these and then try and, and, and deal with them one by one? Or should we try and separate out the, the public comment and, and deal with them on a topic-by-topic basis? My recommendation would be that we do this on a topic-by-topic basis so that we can get to some sort of resolution and closure on, on one topic and then move on to the next. And if we can't do them all tonight, then we continue this matter until, until we can on the, on, on different topics.
Good comment, thank you. Councilmember Gamble, looks like he might have.
Well, I, I have, I have questions, but they're kind of broad-based on every single thing that we've covered, so I don't know how we want to approach this. I'm, I'm happy to throw those out there and see where it goes, but if we're going to take a different direction on how to approach this, I'm willing to defer.
Looked like he has comments, so why don't we, I'm open to suggestions, quite frankly. I'm, I'm not certain of the direction, but certainly we need to receive the public comment. So why don't we do that and then we can further think about the approach? I think it, it's going to be hard to direct comments from the, from the community, the, the public, if you will, into specific categories. So let's open it up. That's okay with everyone, I'm open to suggestions, certainly. But if it is, Lindsay, do we have public comments regarding this item?
We do. So if you are participating by telephone and you wish to speak, please press star nine. And when it is your turn to speak, you will be notified that the host is inviting you to participate, and you will need to press star six to unmute yourself. If you are participating on YouTube, please submit your comments now. Please note that when submitting the comments on YouTube, you will need to write public comments prior to your message if you would like it to be read into the record. And we do have quite a few hands raised, so I'm going to grab my timer and get ready
And while you're thinking, I'll just give Paula a heads up that appreciate some, some direction from you as to the best way to approach this, so it satisfies all of the, all of the issues that you brought up.
If I may, I think it's wise to get public comments because we do know that there are some specific topic areas that have interest people that we expect to hear from, so.
Yeah, we'd definitely do that, but after the public comment, I'll look for some input from anyone and everyone, but certainly Paul, to include Paul. So Lindsay, do we have them queued up yet?
We sure do. We have someone, did someone just press star six to be unmuted?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Okay. This is Diane Henderson Glashinsky. I'm a homeowner, a resident, a business owner, and I rent office space in downtown San Rafael. I'm a land use planner, and I have the honor this year of being the 2020 board chair of the San Rafael Chamber of Commerce. We've worked really closely with your staff and we, I have to commend them for tonight's presentation. It's just amazing. We have participated at the workshops for the last year, and I think you all know that the chamber holds housing as one of our highest priorities, and we've appreciated the opportunity that the city also sees it as a priority. Last year, when you did your independent housing study, we actually also commissioned our own and, which came to pretty much the same conclusions as the city's report. I think that we have to make change. It, it's not working the way it's going, and your staff has laid that out very clearly. I think the inclusionary number needs to change. We're hearing from developers that 20% isn't the answer, and because of it, we're not getting housing. I think the design review process, I have had the honor of being one of the first large projects to go through the new subcommittee with the Los Camos project earlier this year. And I had numerous, numerous, numerous conversations with staff who I work with on a regular basis and know very well and can be very frank with, but they were very concerned about taking such a large project to a subcommittee. And, and I get that, but they took the risk and it worked. It worked for all of us, and I think your staff will tell you that too. We were all pleasantly surprised. I think that in order to get housing built, we need to think outside the box. And as Ally told you tonight, the design review process has evolved. It was very different in 1970 when it started to what it is today. But keep in mind that our design review is, it's an advisory body. It's not an entitled, entitling body. So it's, I think it's fine to cut it back to the two-member subcommittee that we've seen work very successful for the past five or six months. And in fact, let's give it a try. If it doesn't work, we're not casting concrete. You know, we can try something else. But if there's one thing that we can learn from COVID, we've got to think outside the box and do things differently. So thank you all.
And, and thank you for your comments, and certainly a knowledgeable person. So thank you for your, your input. Ran a little over our, you know, two minutes, but that's beneficial for us, I suspect. Next, next person, please. Lindsay, do we have the next person?
We do.
Hi, good evening. This is Bill Carney with Sustainable San Rafael. We're also very anxious to see as much housing built as possible. Just coming quickly, we, we were attracted to scenario two, the 15% onsite equivalent as sort of balancing the two needs of encouraging housing by reducing the overall requirements, but at the same time, and at the same time, offering the opportunity or the possibility of creating more moderate income units. And that is a so-called missing middle in the housing market and something that has been lacking. So for both those reasons, and I just want to note that those market rate units, if you look at exhibit A, are in some cases actually worth more, I mean, those, sorry, moderate income units are in some cases worth more than the market rate, which I'm still scratching my head about, but they're, they're not without value, and yet they also fulfill a public need. I, we do feel strongly that in that scenario two, that the in-lu payment should be upped from five to 10% of the total units, which is the number that is shown to be feasible in scenario one. So in other words, a hybrid of bringing that feasibility, that proven number into a combination with the overall 15% of scenario two. So please take a look at that. And, you know, this is complicated stuff. I hope that you and staff will read closely the comments that we provided. I do want to say that we should be really careful in the buydown of existing projects. I mean, these are things that are already agreed to, so I would really caution you to approach that with caution. And on the design review advisory committee, I'm all for collaboration and informal processes and all that. I am not, however, for closing out the public. That, that to me is just unacceptable. You know, a, a project of size of Los Camos is huge. It needs to see some public discussion. So I would.
Thank you, Bill. I don't need to cut you off, but we do have a time limit, so thank you for your comments.
Okay, happy reading.
Thank, thank you very much. Thanks, Lindsay, for the heads up there.
And I believe that callers may not be able to hear the timer. It is showing it on the YouTube, so if you do have YouTube up, you're welcome to see, you'll see my holdup of my phone, giving you a five-minute or five-second heads up. I'm going to go ahead and allow the next speaker. You'll receive a notification soon.
Hi, good evening, mayor and council members. My name's David Smith. I'm a 20-plus-year resident of northern San Rafael. First, I'd just like to acknowledge the complexity of the inclusive housing issue, and I take my hat off to anyone who understands all these issues and their impacts. I most certainly don't. Thank you to staff for their work, though frankly, I simply don't understand what all the ramifications will be. My comments, though, concern the proposed changes to the design review board. I have similar concerns to those expressed by a number of the members of the planning commission regarding the public input part. I watched the, the meeting where this issue was discussed. I understand the city's desire to streamline processes and reduce red tape, but no one other than those involved have actually seen the new design review advisory committee at work. There have been no meetings open to the public, and it seems to me that it's been selectively tested, but not fully tested. Staff recommends eliminating public noticing and hearing requirements for the new process. I fear this will make it even harder for members of the public to stay informed as to what is to be, what is proposed to be built in their neighborhoods. Staff's suggestion that the public download a number of apps for their smartphones is not really attractive. We, the people, are already overloaded with so much information being thrown at us on a daily, if not hourly, basis. It's impossible to filter out the important information from the junk. And further, older folk who are more technology, technology challenged would be disadvantaged. I fully understand the city wants to find ways to build more housing. I believe most community members who care about their city support responsible growth and housing solutions that are appropriate for their neighborhood. But developers don't always have the community's best interests as their number one priority, and I fear pushing through these changes without further testing or input from the community will make it easier for developers to ride roughshod over existing long-established residents and build projects that are maybe quick and cheap, but don't really fit the surroundings. And importantly, the point has to be made that one size does not all fit all. I suspect we've all seen certain buildings and thought, who on earth approved that? I understand that the state is applying pressure to build more housing, and the city is always interested in expansion that will bring in revenue, but I fear that the city and its somewhat overworked staff are under pressure to find quick solutions that have not necessarily been fully thought out. And I ask that the council resist the urge to rush into something on this issue. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, David.
Okay, I'll be, you'll be receiving a notification, notification soon that you'll need to press star six.
Hi, thank you so much to the presenters and to the council. I'm a 21-year resident of San Rafael. My name is Linda Howman of the Unitarian Universalist Congregation of Marin, which is also a member of the Marin Organizing Committee. Our questions are focused on the staff report presented to the city council regarding potential amendments to the city's housing-related development regulations. And this report is very technical and complicated, and with the most significant part focused on the inclusionary housing discussion. While MOC would like to present a recommendation to the city council regarding the potential changes to the SRMC, there are a number of questions that we would first like answered, and we did submit those in writing, but I'm going to say them again. Why is the city doing this now when it is in the middle of studying the in-lu fee amount? Number two, how can the city separate the in-lu fee structure from the buyout question? If the in-lu fee is high enough, it's half the rate that was used for the lock loan and buyout, would it make more sense to allow builders to pay the fee rather than build the units? Number three, why is the city using the Affordable Housing Fund to pay for administration of the inclusionary program? Shouldn't builders be required to pay an administrative fee in addition to the in-lu fee? Number four, why is it to the city's advantage that a developer would be allowed to build market rate housing and then provide another piece of land slash property rather than pay in-lu fees? Five, how would the change in the inclusionary housing requirement play out in the canal, which is an opportunity zone? Should San Rafael retain the 20% low or VLI requirements there? Should San Rafael retain the 20% low or VLI requirements there to try to forestall gentrification in the community? And last, what research has the city done about the impacts of planning initiatives on low-income communities? Well, thank you for listening and I'll look forward to more answers in the future.
Yes, and thanks for, thanks for your call.
We have another caller here.
Hi, I'm Victoria DeWitt. I live on Fremont Road in the West End neighborhood. We submitted a letter with 23 supporters from both the West End and Gersel Park neighborhoods requesting that you maintain the full five-member design review board, public hearings, and city council approval of exceptions for all hillside development. I thought the planning commission was less than enthusiastic about the proposed changes to the DRB and I question whether there's been enough time to assess the success or deficiencies of the scaled-down version. The design review board is an important step in the review process of hillside development because of the additional design standards that the city has adopted for hillsides. In fact, most of our comments about a hillside project are about the design and adherence to the hillside design guidelines. So we appreciate the opportunity to participate in a transparent public hearing in front of the full design review board. The DRB is critical to the ongoing review of hillside development in order to send to the planning commission an application that meets the criteria of the hillside design guidelines and allows the planning commission to do their job of reviewing the project's adherence to land use and development policies. The current process allows an applicant the opportunity to request an exception to the hillside guidelines with city council approval. However, in its place, the proposed change would create a barrier to public participation by replacing the current process with an appeal process. Doesn't this contradict the goal of streamlining approvals by creating an appeal process that didn't exist before? The city council's approval for exceptions is important to ensure the continued success and protection of our hillsides. Both a design review board hearing and exception decision by the city council are important steps in the approval process and are depend, oh, I'm sorry, and are dependent on each other. How can we approve an exception without the assurance that the applicant has explored every possible development alternative to meet the hillside development standards, which is best accomplished by full and transparent review by the design review board? I gave three minutes, I'm sorry.
Thanks, thank you, Victoria. Okay. Thanks for your, your input and comments. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I am Joanne Webster, President and CEO of the San Rafael Chamber of Commerce. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight on this really important issue and for the efforts you have already taken to tackle our housing crisis. We ask that you do not delay this really important decision any further. As you had heard from the speaker during open time, you have an incredible staff. I can't believe that they've been working on this for two years. At the same time that the city of San Rafael was commissioning its housing report, the San Rafael chamber was also conducting, conducting its own independent study identifying the obstacles to housing and the results were very similar. What the chamber kept hearing over and over from developers that they were not interested in coming to Marin. The cost was too high, approval process took too long, there was confusion over the DRB role, and they had little confidence that the project would be approved or would not be compromised. The chamber is advocating tonight for the most flexible, simple, and feasible plan to spur more housing development. We are very supportive of your efforts that you've already tried and practiced, like simplifying the DRB process. We need a new program to spur the much-needed housing in our city. We encourage units of all kinds. The plan you do, you adopt tonight does not have to be permanent. We highly recommend that you make it a pilot plan. The project can then be evaluated in six months, 12 months, or even create a threshold of a certain number of units to determine if it is working or not. We ask that you direct staff to focus on the most feasible ordinance that facilitates new housing development, a plan that is simple and flexible, a plan that makes housing to access the housing for all people a reality in our city. It looks as if the 10% plan is the most feasible. We simply do not have the parcels large enough to build very large projects. We ask that you take a hard look at option three and continue on the same track you have been on that staff recommends. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Thank you, Joanne.
Okay, that looks like that concludes public comment on our calls for now. I'm going to move to our YouTube comments. This is from Cheryl Douglas. We hear so many, we hear so many lifelong, sorry, we hear so many longtime San Rafael residents bemoan their increased perception of the city and lifestyle they valued and works to maintain here is fast slipping away. The governing powers talk a good game about involving residents in the process, about making things more transparent. But now they are shutting off the best avenue that exists to have a public process, a process that includes public meetings held during evening hours when more people can attend. Not even the newspaper will be covering upcoming development negotiated behind closed doors at city hall. Design review board meetings are the earliest and best opportunities for the public to actually see what developments are proposed, to have direct interaction with design professionals from all sides, and to help shape projects to reflect community values. The PC is charged with big-picture issues that the DRB is not allowed to involve itself with, like zoning, traffic, or land use. And the PC also serves as the ultimate approval body. However, the PC is a commission with a few design professionals on it. The DRB does the heavy lifting of analyzing the minutia of how a project works and how it looks. Planning commission approval has always been heavily influenced by recommendations from DRB because the two groups bring very different skill sets to the process. By the time a project is taken to PC, plans can be rather difficult to influence. The city of San Rafael has been fortunate, has been the fortunate recipient of many thousands of hours of free expert advice and brainstorming from the licensed professionals that sit on the DRB. Individual members hear from citizens they encounter on site visits and people who speak from the audience during meetings. DRB members have even successfully championed public opinions that had been flatly rejected by staff. Projects get better because of their contributions. Why would we not want that?
My name is Chris Hart. I'm a lifelong resident of San Rafael and a product of San Rafael City Schools. I'm commenting on the Community Development Report Agenda Item 5A. I've been involved in many housing developments and redevelopments across the United States as well as national housing policy. First, I must communicate that the community development staff is one of, if not the most forward-thinking progressive groups that I have encountered. It is evident that their work is focused squarely on the citizens of San Rafael and those who work here but not, but do not yet live here. Inclusionary housing, increasing the requirement years ago was a noble concept, but the results have clearly not yielded the desired goal. Rather, the increase in the inclusionary housing percentage had the opposite effect. All housing development slowed or simply stopped. Thus, the supply-demand equilibrium has become severely dislocated. All three options provided by staff are good and will start to change the supply-demand imbalance. I believe that a 10% onsite inclusionary level is appropriate. First, that will help developers balance the extreme risk of acquiring overly expensive land with the development costs. See Exhibit A pro forma assumptions with an acquisition cost of 7.5 million per acre. Secondly, a recent analysis I commissioned from the Concord Group based on the 2009-19 year-end data indicated that the fastest-growing rental segment in San Rafael and the greater county of Marin are people who earn $150,000 or more in income plus 73% in six years. The lower wage earner is the opposite, meaning that they have already left the market. So targeting the supply-demand equilibrium solution at that segment is off. Rather, the solution should be simply the entire supply side. And to do that, I would suggest that staff be given flexibility to work with the developer on options two, three, and four. Until the supply side is addressed, the in-loop fees will not have an immediate impact. We need a much larger war chest and lower acquisition costs for the in-loop fee to be effectively deployed. Density bonus, the city should align with the state of California at this time. I recommend that the council align to staff and their recommendation. That way, the density is more likely to be beneficial to the existing single-family home values within the city by being supportive of those embedded values. Too often across the country, progressive housing policy can be detrimental to existing home values because maximizing density leads to ugly design. Look no further than SB 50 and the proposal in Nevada with fourth and grant, accepting staff's recommendation, I believe, will position the city of San Rafael to be ahead of mandated state policies. Designer review board, the process needs streamlining. Incorporating designer review members into the planning commission would make for a better process. Time in this regard will not only save money, but will save the supply side of housing. I firmly believe that the city of San Rafael will have better projects as a result faster. With respect to Item D and the interest of time, each of those amendment recommendations are a net positive to the city, the developer, and staff. Staff has done a tremendous amount of outreach on the San Rafael's housing policy, much more than any other jurisdictions that I am familiar with. This is the perfect opportunity to position San Rafael for the right kind of growth, increasing tax revenues, improving the quality of life for citizens, supporting existing home values, and secure San Rafael as the most beautiful city in the Bay Area. I recommend that the city council at this meeting accept the report and recommendations of staff as a result. I firmly believe the housing stock will grow into a beautifully diverse aspect of our city. Please approve. Thank you. A 200-character limit is clearly hard for me. Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
This is Joshua Townsend on behalf of San Rafael Chamber. The chamber has made the production of new housing units a top priority focus and support new housing production attainable by our local workforce. We know the need, we know that the need for more workforce housing is crucial to securing our economic future. We strongly support the modification of existing onsite inclusionary projects from 20% to 10%. We also support flexibility in the city's in-loop fee to allow developers to apply the fee for the production of 100% inclusionary housing projects. Shirley Fisher. Design of large critically-located projects strongly impacts surrounding neighborhoods and deserves publicly noticed full DRB review. Walking streets to see onsite notification or requiring community members to use an app tool are not sufficient for public notification. Still need other channels of notifying the public. Name withheld. I support a hybrid recommendation. Large projects should be subject to full DRB and public comment early in the process. What is the definition of a large project? What is the definition of a large project? Density bonuses and other concessions to developers should not be allowed to double-dip on density bonuses and concessions. How can this be curtailed? Salama Lox. I strongly agree with Shirley Fisher. I have often been alerted by casually passing a sign while power walking. Kate Powers. San Rafael Municipal Code Section 14.16.190 height bonus. Would aligning with state height bonuses be added to any current San Rafael height bonuses for 100% affordable housing units or replace them? Wondering how public noticing can be simplified if some projects can either go to zoning administrator or PC or CD, community development director. That's planning commission and community development director. I find it hard to follow projects now. Name withheld. Public notification must be improved so that anyone in the city can be informed of a project. Several different methods need to be used for different communities. All design review board meetings must be noticed to the public. If you use a subcommittee, they must be noticed. If the chamber is part of a subcommittee, the rest of the public must have access to this. Another comment, name withheld, that they agree with Victoria. We require a full planning commission for hillside development. Name withheld. Responsible growth in Marin supports lowering inclusionary rate to 15%. And there are a couple more coming in, so I'm just going to give a couple seconds for those. And take a breath. All right, we've got another comment, name withheld. Discretionary review of housing projects through current process has been, has been an important tool for communities to find out about and weigh in on projects that affect them. We do have another caller. That concludes YouTube comments for now. They might continue coming in, but we do have another caller on the line. So if you receive a notification, you'll press star six and be able to provide your comments. Did someone on the telephone with the last digits 16 of their telephone number just receive a notification to speak? If you have, please press star six and that will unmute you. And make sure your own phone is unmuted as well, please. Okay, I'm going to go back to our YouTube comment and see if there's anything else coming in. Looks like I'm unable to get this speaker. I'm not sure if they're not able to unmute. I'll try one more time and then if not, that will conclude public comment.
Hello?
Hi, there you go.
You hear me now?
Sure do.
Yeah, this is John Reynolds from the Canal, of course, resident of the Canal. And I'm also a part of Marin Organizing Committee. I do appreciate this report that come forward. There was an issue, of course, with...
Hey, John, are you able to hear me okay? Hey, John, if you can go ahead and turn your volume down on your computer.
You hear me now? You hear me? Yeah, this is John Reynolds. I, this is John Reynolds from the Canal, of course. And also from First United Methodist Church and a part of MOC. I do support what MOC presented tonight. This report come forward, there was an issue, of course. It's a good report. And it's a beginning report to move forward on the issue of...
Are you able to hear me okay?
Yeah. It's a good report and I think moving forward that we need to give more time, give more ti, time to moving this forward.
Can you hear me now?
Okay. This is John Reynolds. I, this is John Reynolds, of course. And also from First United Methodist Church and a part of MOC.
Hey, John.
I do support what MOC presented tonight.
John, can you hear me okay on the phone?
There was an issue, of course. It's a good report. And it's a beginning report to move forward on the issue of... Of course, you can hear me. Yeah.
I'm going to go ahead and mute John. He's, obviously, we're experiencing some feedback. It sounds like he has maybe a couple devices open that are a little bit delayed. I'm going to give him a second. John, if you can hear me okay, what I recommend is that you turn your volume down on YouTube and any device that you're listening to this meeting through. And if you can't figure that out, if you could just walk away on your phone and you'll be able to focus on your thoughts because it'll be hard to speak when you're hearing yourself. I'm going to go ahead and get and ask you to unmute and hope this works. Looks like we lost, we lost connection with John.
Do we have others?
We do not. That would conclude public comment.
Okay. Let's, let's close public and if John comes back, we'll... Can you hear me okay? I'm checking my phone.
I can hear you, Mr. Mayor. If I, if we see him hop back on, I'll just turn my, my screen back on and you'll know that he was able to, we'll try again.
Okay, with the exception of John, we'll then close public comment and certainly thank everyone for, for the comments you've provided, the questions, et cetera. So thank, thanks to, to those that have done so this evening. Public comment is now closed. We'll come back to council members for follow-up questions. But before, perhaps, there were some questions that were asked and I'll direct you, Paul, and you can, you can filter out however any way you wish to address some of the questions that you heard.
Certainly, we can respond. Most of the questions, which were quite a bit from the Marin Organizing Committee, I have not seen that letter, but it might be more appropriate for us if we're going to take a pause and perhaps view these topics separately, is that we would provide a response to those when we review the inclusionary housing and density bonus comments. I think it's more appropriate because there were a lot of detailed comments or questions there on that. And Ethan, I mean, I don't know if you're prepared to respond to those questions from the Marin Organizing Committee, but there were quite a few. Do you want to take a shot? You, you can't...
I, I'm happy to start answering those questions now or if you want to do the inclusionary piece first. Really, just let me know. I'm happy to answer whenever.
Okay, well, I'll be honest with you. I, I have my, my phone, I've got an iPad and a Mini. The Mini is out of gas.
Then, then I will...
I didn't anticipate and so I don't have the report in front of me. So I'm, I'm disadvantaged, I, I have to admit.
No worries. And I, why don't I take the inclusionary housing pieces first? I, I... I flagged all those questions, so I can kind of go through all those questions first and we can start there. Um, mostly that before jumping into the inclusionary piece, I got brought up. I just want to flag that the density bonus portion is really just referring back to state code. So that the proposal that's being for the density bonus is just to make amendments to align with state code. So when we get to that policy, just know that that's kind of what that recommendation is.
So we have no discretion if it's aligning with the state policy?
Yeah.
Uh, does that mean we have no discretion with regard to the item or not?
Um, we, I'll let Ally handle that. She's better at that, so I had that question.
If I can just, um, just share my thoughts on that. There's little discretion, but there are some questions that came up that would be helpful to address. So, I mean, I, I think that what Ethan suggested is kind of doing it by category. And once you're finished with the INLU housing discussion, then we can, then I can kind of shed some light on some of the questions that were asked related to density bonus law.
Okay, well, help me out then. What is the first category? Is it inclusionary or is it something other than inclusionary?
It's inclusionary and the questions that I have written down from, from MOC. So the first question I have is, is why should we pursue this change now when there's a study underway? So there's two kind of main answers to that. The first is that the study that we're working on is in partnership with several other county jurisdictions and it's not going to be completed until likely the end of next year. It takes a little bit of time because there's so many jurisdictions. So it's not going to be something that happens immediately. And the inclusionary housing piece specifically, as part of all of our community outreach the last two years, was that this was the most important thing that people wanted to move forward with. So there's a sense, there was a sense of urgency from the community workshops about moving this forward and it wasn't necessarily something that we would want to wait until a year from now to implement. The second question that I have written down is why would we want to do an INLU buyout? For Linda, so I'm paraphrasing a little bit. So if I'm not hitting the question exactly, please forgive me. But um, the main reason is that there's a potential for an incentive to spur development. That's the main reason why you may want to consider a potential buyout. So usually a project may have a lag between when they get their planning entitlements and when they get their building permits. And so a buyout is one potential way to provide a financial incentive without any cost to the city in terms of having to change fees or anything like that to spur a project to move and develop. And just a tool in the city's tool chest if they potentially wanted to try to go along there. You could choose not to. Those projects are already entitled. But the idea and the question that came up was, is it a potential option? And is there an incentive? And there is an incentive there if the price is set accurately. The next question I had was trust fund fee administrative costs. So there is a small charge that happens annually to the trust fund and that's for the administration of our below market rate rental properties. And that's given to Marin Housing Authority. And the main reason why is because the cost of that is significantly less than what it would be if the city was to take on that responsibility ourselves. Now, there's not a significant, I think it's about ten thousand dollars annually, thirteen thousand. Paul will know specifically. But there's not a large, there's not like a ten percent of city staff time that gets billed to the trust fund. The trust fund dollars, with the exception of that below market rate administration, go to affordable housing development. The next question I have is, why would we offer land conveyance? The main reason, again, it's just, it's an option. It's not an option that often gets utilized in other jurisdictions. But in the case of, if we look at a project like Whistlestop, if we didn't have that option, we may not necessarily have had the ability to move forward with that type of project. So it doesn't necessarily have to be implemented. We may decide not to do the land conveyance option. We could even say that the economic cost had to be significantly higher. But the idea is just that we don't want to necessarily limit all the potential flexibility and options that we could provide to a developer. And then the next question I have is, how might this play out in the opportunity zone? And I, there's several things there. The big one is that there's a lot of, for, for, um, a little context. The opportunity zone is a, one census tract within the Canal neighborhood. And how the opportunity zones work is that there's a significant tax rate provider on capital gains for projects that buy a property and then put in the, the exact amount that they bought for it in rehab. So if you buy a five thousand, five million dollar property in order to be eligible for the opportunity zone benefits, you have to put in an additional five million dollars. So the project would have to be ten million dollars total. So, this would play out the same in whatever changes, it would fall within the opportunity zone. It's the same at citywide. Some jurisdictions have changed it based upon location. We didn't analyze that at the city level in the staff report. And the reason why we didn't look at it geographically is because one of our main goals was to try to simplify and provide transparency. And one feedback that we did get from several developers and also the public was that having one citywide ordinance makes it easier to implement it to track as what are the requirements, where are the requirements, that sort of thing. And then the final question that I have from MOC is what research on income? So I do want to flag that we did have a significant section in the staff report that looks specifically at income and equity impacts. And I, ultimately, kind of what they found, they being the National Bureau of Economic Research, Enterprise Community Partners, some very large groups that have looked at this from a very statistical point of view at the national level. They have found that there are significant impacts both in high resource areas but also in low, low resource areas as well. So while there is a finding that any affordable housing, to get those same benefits in terms of inclusionary housing, there is a strong correlation to wanting to provide those units. They don't necessarily need to be onsite, but they should be in that neighborhood. What they did also find is even if you don't provide that property in that neighborhood, you can really create strong economic benefits in a community by having a very strong, high-quality, well-built, affordable housing project in, in a low-income area. There's significant benefits that help both the community but then also that specific project in and of itself. And that goes back to that question of needing to ensure high-quality housing. I think that's all the questions. And then I wrote down for the inclusion piece.
Well, thanks for addressing the questions and it looks like Paul may have a comment.
Yeah, I want to make a suggestion here because we've been at this for a good hour and a half or more. And there's a lot of unrelated things here that are on, that are covered in one report. They're all linked back to housing, but they are unrelated. Some of them are complicated and some of them involve public process. And I think it might be prudent for us to separate the discussion of these and perhaps come back to the City Council, maybe at the next meeting to cover the most complicated topic, which is the inclusionary housing. So that that discussion solely focuses on that without being, let's say overwhelmed by some of these other things that are, that are discussed. And, and then the following meeting, we would tackle discussing any potential changes to the design review board, the hillside exceptions, the appeals. Because those are process, those are basically process-driven and there are a lot simpler discussions to have. And so that would be my suggestion. Of course, entertaining questions from the council tonight would be fine. But that's how I see this maybe a way of better managing a review of these, these very topics.
Uh, well, thank you, Paul. Frankly, I like your suggestion because we've thrown a lot at us tonight. And of course, we read the report prior, but still there's quite a lot of new information. And to, to address it, I think in a reasonable and comprehensive way, in a manner other than you suggested seems awkward to me. So I think we'd be more effective and we want to, of course, move on with this. But you've been working on it for some time, so we want to get, do attention to the many components that are included. Uh, so that, that quite frankly, I think is a sound suggestion. But I'll ask council members for their, their preference or direction with regard to the matter before us. Starting with anyone, starting with Councilmember Bushy. Thank you.
Paul, I agree with your desire to put the issues in sequence. However, this evening, we have gathered, staff, the public, everyone. And we have not had an opportunity for the decision-makers to have any sort of input at all. I don't think it makes sense to close this meeting now or soon on this topic and then reconvene to again hear comments on inclusionary housing and on the other two issues, which I will take your, your description of them as process issues. I think you're right in, in separating them that way. I think we can at least get some sort of preliminary direction on the inclusionary issue tonight. And then maybe, maybe additional, maybe additional preliminary comments as well on the procedural issues. And then let's see if we can, if we can get inclusionary, if we, if there's enough of a consensus about where we should go. Maybe we can finish that tonight. And then the procedural issues will give you some preliminary thoughts and then we can come back with those in a more focused way. That would, that would be my suggestion, but if we want to end now and reconvene, we could do that as well.
And then thanks for your, your comments for looking for an approach that works for everyone. Again, it seems to me there's quite a lot here and we want to approach this in a, in a, you know, in a way that we satisfied the issues before us. But I appreciate your thoughts certainly. Uh, John or Katie, any comments on where we might go? Paul has made one suggestion, recommendation. What's your thinking?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, no, thank you, Mayor. It is a lot of information and the reality is we've been talking about it for two years. So I think we all want to keep it moving forward. So what we're trying to figure out is what is the best way to keep that conversation going forward. So tonight is a, is a report that we're accepting and I'm happy to kind of go through the list and, you know, I have some notes and it won't be necessarily hitting everything, but maybe that is a starting point. I agree with Councilmember Bushy that people gave input tonight. We had a good report, comprehensive. And by the way, the written report was amazing, you know, for, for the public that's listening. As great as the presentation was, the staff report we had was even more thorough. But maybe we can give, maybe Mayor, maybe we can get some kind of broad feedback that would then at least help Paul and his team keep moving forward. We have been at this for a couple of years now.
We have, but this is the condensed version and so appreciate your comments. Uh, Councilmember Gamlin, any thoughts on this?
Yeah, I'm in agreement that there's, there's a lot of information here and we've obviously been discussing it for a long time as well. I've wrote down a number of questions that I think are pertinent to the discussion and would like to at least get through those tonight. Whether or not it comes down to us just accepting a report or deferring to accepting a report into another meeting, you know, we can do that as well. But I think that we have momentum now, although, yeah, it is, you know, ten after nine and we've been at this for an hour and thirty, forty-five minutes. I think it's prudent for us to acknowledge that the community's participation in this and to give our feedback initially. And then after we do that, see where it goes from there.
Okay, then why don't, why don't we do that, Paul? I appreciate your, your recommendation, modify it a little bit, provide some input based on the report and public comment to this point. And then to be returned probably at the next meeting to further approach the issue and wrap it up. So, pardon me, comments, comments from council members, starting with whoever wants to start.
I'll start. First, I'm just going to go through a couple, couple questions. They're pretty straightforward. I think I've got them nailed down to who should answer them. So Ethan, on the inclusionary ratio, it's more of a broad question in terms of what's working and what's not working. And you might have these numbers, but if not, if you could bring them back when we discuss this again. So in the last ten years, I don't need to go back, you know, twenty, thirty years, but the last ten years, under our current inclusionary housing policy of the twenty percent, how many units have actually been permitted and how many have actually been built in, using that? So that's, that's one question. If you can answer that quickly, that'd be great and then I can move on. I've got a couple more for Ally.
Paul, do you have that specific number? I believe the number of inclusionary units, I'm not sure if it's in the last ten years, but at least in the most recent state report, I think it was four hundred, was around four hundred inclusionary units. But Paul, you may know the specific...
Yeah, and, you know, I think, I think it would be better if we came back with something very specific, Councilmember Gamlin. I don't want to...
Yeah, and it doesn't have, it doesn't have to be a ten-year period. It could be a five-year period. You know, just something that gives us a decent amount of time to see, is this actually working? The reason for that question is that we can have, and a comment on this is we can have an inclusionary housing to be twenty percent, thirty percent, fifty percent, whatever it is. But if it doesn't mean that we actually do anything with it, then it, you know, what's the purpose of having that? Because zero percent of twenty is still zero. But if fifty percent of ten gives us, you know, two units or five units, then, then that's what we want to look at. So that's why I want to understand, we have this policy in place. It's been in place for a while. What's the actual results of it?
I can say this on sort of a qualitative level is that when the inclusionary housing requirement jumped from fifteen to twenty percent, there was a significant reduction in the number of housing units produced. And I think we could provide you with that information. I just can't give you specifics right now.
That would, that would be great. That would be great. Yeah, something that says what it was, what it was in fifteen and what it is now. That would be great analysis. Thank you. Thank you, Ethan and Paul on that. So moving on to Ally, this is just a clarification and I apologize that I didn't understand it maybe the way that it was presented. On one hundred percent affordable housing projects, as it refers to the state legislation that was recently passed, the thirty-three foot bonus for these hundred percent projects, is that it, that are within a, I think it's a quarter mile of transit? Is that in addition to the existing height limits that we currently have? For example, if, if in the downtown, we have a sixty-foot or sixty-two-foot height limit, does that mean a hundred percent affordable project, project that's right downtown next to transit could actually be as high as ninety-three feet or whatever by right?
Yeah, so as long as that's the base height, it would be in addition to that. And there are a number of height bonuses that are allowed by our code for affordable housing projects or within certain distance of transit. Though, it wouldn't be cumulative for those projects. It would just be, this just relates to our base height limits.
So, so if you could give me an example, what is our base height limit, you know, on Fourth Street next to the Transit Center?
We'll say, I'm not exactly sure what the maximum height limit is, but there could be, because there are different height limits depending on where you are. Let's say the height limit for, you know, within a block of the Transit Center, it's, it's forty-five feet.
Okay.
That density bonus would allow an additional height of thirty-three feet above that.
So seventy-eight feet. Whereas, whereas right now, that I think the projects that we've been seeing that have been getting density bonuses, it's been up to like a maximum of like sixty-two feet or somewhere around that, that line. I think the Seagate, the Seagate property, there was sixty-four feet or something like that, including their density bonus. Yeah, Paul?
Yeah, I just had one clarification on that and I just, it's really just to make a point of what, what Ally is stating is that we have this mandate by the state of California and we have our own height bonuses and it's not additive. So you don't get, you know, your base height plus our height bonus plus this thirty-three feet. The way we've structured this is there's no double dipping.
Right.
You get the state bonus or you get our bonus. And so, and that was intentional because we didn't want to turn in a project that's going to be, that, you know, obviously takes advantage of both of it.
Correct, correct. And that's good, good to confirm. But it's so, but I am correct in my assumption that it sounds like that where we're looking at certain levels, this, if there was a completely hundred percent affordable project and the base was forty-two and you could buy right, get thirty-three on top of that, it's going to be higher than really anything that we've been working on. and the base was 42 and you could buy right, get 33 on top of that, it's going to be higher than really anything that we have right now.
That's correct.
Okay, um, and, okay, that was, thank you very much. Um, on the appeals process to the city, to the city council, I think this is in referring to the, the Hillside projects. Um, and, and changing those. It, it also goes into the pot, the, the, the piece on appeals in general and, and the timing and the cost involved with that. So right now, that could, it, it, you know, the approval of that would, on the Hillside would automatically go to the council. The proposal is, is that it would change to the planning commission and still, still provide for an appeal process of the planning commission's decision. Would that fall into the new appeals process? And, you know, in terms of timing and cost, or would it be something completely different because of what it is?
No, it would be the same. So the, there, there are two different things. So one is, um, the idea of having to, allowing us to streamline the appeal process. Basically getting that, that appeal scheduled for a city council decision as quickly as possible without having to weigh, um, you know, schedules of the app, appellant and applicant. Um, re- uh, reducing or lowering the review process for the exceptions would still allow an opportunity for an appeal. That appeal would be the same appeal that we allow for in the municipal code. Um, there's only one appeal process. So yeah, we would be, it would be the new appeal process that we're, we're talking about. Does that?
So, yeah, so basically what this is, what this is doing is it's taking our process that we have for pretty much all projects, going through the planning commission, planning commission issues a decision. And if that decision is, you know, wants to be appealed by an appellant, they can do that on any project right now. And so this is really bringing the Hillside question, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the Hillside question into the same guidelines that every other project comes into place. Is that, is that?
That's correct.
Right.
Kind of correct.
Just taking one step further, right now, the planning commission has been delegated the task of reviewing all exceptions and variances except for the exceptions, um, related to Hillside development. And so we're just trying to align the exception for Hillside development with everything else that the planning commission has been delegated to, um, review. Um, that was kind of the intent. Um, but yeah, then the review process would be, and, and appeal process would be the same as any other project, um, or process.
Perfect. Paul, did you?
Yeah, I just want to throw in some information on this, just so you have this in hand. And that is, um, exception requests in the Hillside area are very rare. In fact, we strongly, strongly discourage them because they're difficult to make findings to approve them. And we did a check, in the last 20 years, there had been five exceptions that have, uh, Hillside exceptions that have been acted on by the city council. That'll give you an idea of how frequently we see them. Two of them were on one property. One of them is that you reviewed several months ago for property on Lucas Valley Road that is so unusually large that it was just one of those things where you had to approve an exception because of the unusual circumstances of the property. My point is we very, very rarely get these applications. And, um, by changing this process, we don't, I mean, we're not going to, we're not, I don't see that we're going to see any change in, uh, uh, the frequency of, of when we see these. And we're certainly not going to change our discouraging of them. So I just make sure you understood that.
And it's, and it's not that it, that it takes away the public process. It's just shifting it to be in line with the rest, what we do on all other projects. So that when an exception is requested, it'll go to the planning commission, it'll be noticed, there'll be meetings, there'll be opportunity for public comment. Um, they'll make their decision and then that can even be appealed. Okay. Um, great. So, and then the last one, Ally, on the small lots piece, I think the 5,000 square feet lot and below, having the same, um, uh, the same building ability to put multifamily on these smaller lots. I apologize for, for not being, you know, up to speed on this, but how big of a project can fit on a 5,000 square foot lot? I know it's kind of a easy question, but I mean, are we talking just this thing just to go straight up? Um, or we, you know, is this, is the typical thing on a 5,000 square foot lot? Why are we running into this problem? Are people saying, I want to build eight units on 5,000 square feet? Or are they saying, I want to build four, but under current requirements, they can't even do that?
Yeah, so it depends. Um, the, does, the density ranges, um, go from, I think, 400 square feet per unit to up to 1,000 square feet per unit. So it could be, you know, for a 5,000 square foot lot, it could be five units or it could be under that. Um, um, in the downtown area, development of five, um, thousand square foot lot is still permitted. So it's only, it's a certain number of lots that are, that extend beyond the downtown area. And no, for example, right now, we're looking at, um, a lot that is 3,000 square feet proposing development of three units. And it's not, it's a, you know, 30-foot structure. So it's not an unusual thing. It's allowed to, to occur because it's in the downtown area. But, um, just to give you some perspective, it's not, this is, we're not talking about a high-rise that will occur all of a sudden. It's just allowing for development at the densities that are already allowed by that zoning district.
Right, so maybe, maybe this might, I mean, you might know this, you might not, or Paul, you might know this. The, the recent project that was appealed to us on Shader Street, how many square fi- square foot of a lot was that? And, and I, because I think they put seven units on it. Do you recall, Paul, how big that, that triangular lot is?
No, I don't recall what the size of that, um, that property was. But I believe that zoning permits, um, around one unit per, or one unit per 1,000 square feet of land area.
Okay, okay.
That might have been, plus I think they may have had a bonus of an additional unit.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that was, that, that was it. I just, I just, I was trying to visualize what this, what this would look like and how many of these are actually out there? Where there's 5,000 square foot lots that are looking for multi-fa- multifamily development. So that's all I've got.
Mayor, you're on mute.
There we go. Trying to save the remaining power that I have. Uh, Councilmember Bushy, do you have comment? Questions?
I, I, I do. I, I'm not sure that we're, I, I want to address some of the major policy issues and provide, um, my thoughts to staff on, on, on where we should go on the policy issues. Um, particularly as, a- as they have teed them up, um, in the, um, staff report, which I think is very helpful, um, to us, to us moving forward. I know there's a lot of detail that we can get lost in, in, in this. And I, I think we're, um, better served if we, um, uh, focus on the, the high-level policy. So I'm prepared to give my preliminary comments on the key staff questions, if that's how we would like to see. Okay, um, I'm just going to march right through the list. Should the city allow developers expanded options to pay in affordable housing in Lufi instead of onsite units? Yes. Um, a, a, a theme that you will hear throughout all of my comments is providing developers flexibility. Maintain our, um, commitment to our goals and our, our, our values, but give the developers flexibility on how they go about achieving that. Um, consistent with that, the, the next one, should the city move forward with a, an, an inclusionary housing design with baseline and additional requirements as proposed by staff? My policy answer is yes, uh, yes, but I think we need to work on the vocabulary. I, I, the baseline and additional, I don't think quite capture the, um, notion that a portion of them are sort of mandatory and prescriptive. Um, an, an additional portion, um, can be selected from a menu. So I, I'm not sure what the vocabulary is, but I think it's baseline and additional need work. But the concept is great. So, um, yeah, so the question is what levels? Um, we've, um, heard to the extent we've had recommendations tonight, they have focused on the, what I think is your scenario three, um, the 10% put together in different, um, configurations. I think that makes sense, um, and I would, um, capture as much, um, uh, flexibility as possible, but maintain the, um, the standards. But, um, let the developers choose how they are going to, how they are going to meet them. Um, buyouts for entitled projects, um, I wish we didn't have to do this. I wish we hadn't had to do Locklomond. Um, but we need to sort of recalibrate, I think, on some projects. And so as sort of a, a temporary, um, transition time, um, I, I, I think that we do need to be open to, um, to, to buyouts on, much like, um, we did in Locklomond. Although it's just there today and I noticed there's no construction going on. And I think they're supposed to be done by December, so I don't know. Uh, uh, they, they, we need to see if, if, if buyouts actually work. Because again, our overarching goal here is to get projects built. Um, so if, if the buyout that we have allowed doesn't bring forward completion, that would cause me to rethink the, the wisdom of, um, of buyouts. Um, density bonus, uh, it appears that we, we don't have a whole lot of discretion in how this goes anyway at state law. I, I don't know, we should spend a lot of time worrying about too many of the details there. Um, and I'm going to skip the, the DRB one and go to the amendments to encourage development and streamline approvals. Absolutely agree. Um, the one thing that we heard loud and clear in all of our public comment sessions, um, was the duration of the approval process. So any way that we can come up with, um, to streamline the process, I think is something that we should, um, definitely move forward with. I've sort of saved the best for last, um, and that is with the, the design review, um, committee. I see, have seen such their work upfront and in, 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 in my face on, on projects, taking something that, um, was, um, better than mediocre, but it just made it spectacular. Um, the DRB has done such great work for our community. Um, that it's, it is, um, we need to recognize that value that has been there. That said, um, I've also been around the process for, I think, more years than I care to tally at this point. Um, and I can remember when the DRB was much less formal and they sat, everybody, they all sat around a table. Um, I don't know if there was public notice, um, but it was more of a collaboration session than the highly formal, um, you know, witnesses testifying sort of procedure that it has, it has turned into. Um, I don't know if substantively that they've been, um, a victim of mission creep, but there certainly has been mission creep on the procedural side. The process associated with DRB has, has become much bigger, um, and more detailed, um, and expensive than it was, um, i- in the beginning. Um, it sounds like, um, this subcommittee, um, uh, process that we've been piloting seems to be working. Um, if we can capture the benefit that the DRB has brought um, and do that in a way that imposes, um, less costs and, uh, and fewer delays on our developers, then I think that's something, um, that, that, that we should pursue. Um, I think we would definitely want to, um, see the objective of focusing the public input on the planning commission. So we would really want to, uh, maybe even enhance some of our, um, public comment opportunities there at the planning commission. Um, but our, um, our goal is to capture those de- design ideas, get them in as, as quickly as possible. Um, and bring together a, a more condensed process for, for developers, um, and try it. Um, and maybe we'll set some sort of a deadline, either in units developed or time, that we go back and take a look at this and see if, um, if the, um, more condensed process, um, is working for us. So there are my thoughts on, on, on the big policy deci- uh, decisions.
Mayor, can't hear you.
Vice Mayor, Colin, comments?
You're going to just like sign me. I knew you.
I'm, I'm about to, I'm about to go completely dead here. I'm afraid I'm freaked out about this.
I know. I, I only have a little bit on my computer too. I'm going to, after I get my comment, I'm going to quickly run and get a, a, a cord from my computer. Um, I'm going to follow, uh, Councilmember Bushy's approach as well, um, and get, just give some top-line, um, input. And, and first have to start with the big picture here. I, we all agree, everyone on this call, everyone that's called in, that the current system is not working. That we continue to approve housing units. This has been a very pro-housing council and it has been for decades. But the units aren't always getting built, which is why the mayor had asked that we start this whole process two years ago. So really the big picture, something needs to change. And we looked at the low-hanging fruit, but now we're getting to the juicy stuff that's really can move the needle. Um, and so, uh, jumping right in, the inclusionary. And it's so interesting, and I was talking to Ethan earlier today, like 20% always sounds better because, you know, hey, 20% more chocolate cake is better than 10% more. But it's really when you get down into it, it hasn't been working. We've had that policy for a long time and it's not being built. So even though it might be counterintuitive when you drill down into all the data, and boy, there is so much data in that report you gave us. I have become convinced that it needs to change, the inclusionary. Uh, and I would, um, support the 10% that Councilmember Bushy also suggested. And then agree to review it in a year or two year, whatever that prod, that timing is. I don't know how long it takes to have it work through to see if we're starting to move the needle in the way that we want to as a community. Um, in Lufi's, uh, it's interesting because Mary Beth, you were talking about giving the developer flexibility, absolutely. But it also, that, those dollars give the city flexibility. And so I, I, I do want to have in Louis, the, the package as it were, the money that we received from Locklomond, which was paying, but we had a very long discussion that night about buyouts, about looking at it. That money can be leveraged in a way that other dollars can't be. So we can use it to maximize, be it Mill Street or whatever projects are out there. So that to me is really precious dollars that, um, I think the city could use that flexibility going forward. Um, uh, there was a section on, um, uh, developers and helping them out or giving them options, whether they're entitled before or after construction. I go with the staff recommendation on that. Um, so it's after they have pulled permits, but before they brought, uh, start construction. Um, again, there was a lot more content in the report that I won't go into, but I agree with the, the conclusions that were made. Um, Councilmember, um, Gamlin talked about the small lots. Um, yeah, I mean, there will always be discretion, but we should be looking at the available land that is in the appropriate place for appropriate-sized housing. So I, I would, um, encourage that we add that to possible develop all, development lots. And then again, like Mary Beth, saving the, the best for last on the, the DRB. And it's, it is always hard to change a system in a process because we all get really comfortable with it. And we can see the benefits and it's hard to imagine something different when we're used to how it's been. Um, one thing that was not mentioned in the report, which I know we've talked about here, is when the DRB is part of the process. So back when Mary Beth and I were on the planning commission, the DRB was always first. And I know we've looked at having the DRB be second. And, uh, my sense was that was actually, um, really beneficial to everybody. One, because the planning commission could do the policy, the bigger juicy, you know, the, the traffic, everything else. Um, where before those discussions were happening at the DRB and they weren't the body to be hearing that. So I, I do think that is part of, as we go forward, is having any sort of DRB process after the planning permission. Um, I'm delighted to hear that this thinking outside the box during COVID, um, is, uh, having beneficial results. I do agree though, our, we have an engaged and involved community. So as we go forward, um, how do we have those engagement tools still be there for the public? And, and, you know, Seth, you can come back to us on this. I do think meetings do need to be noticed. I think there needs to be a way to have input and not just the planning commission. I think there needs to be a conversation around the design, probably on just the larger projects. Um, and I love the online tool. I think it was called Builder I. But I agree with the, the caller that, or a couple callers that are public that called in, that it can't just be that tool. As we found with engagement with our residents, one tool does not fit everyone. So we really do need another way that people can provide input. Um, so the last part, there were a lot, we received letters and comments tonight on the Hillside. Uh, and I just want to be clear, the Hillside, um, covenant, as it were, that's not changing. As I understand it, the Hillside, that is staying as is. And I have absolute trust in the planning commission that they will know how to apply the Hillside covenant, um, to. covenant to projects, because that is what they know how to do. And having the exceptions become in alignment with all the other exceptions, and have it be with the planning commission, that was something that Councilmember Bushy talked about. I, I agree with that, that those should, those, those should all be aligned. To have that as a one-off, I don't know how that got out of sync. But I do want to reassure the public that we're not changing the hillside guidelines. It's not like there's gonna be less review, it's just that the process is gonna be a little different. So I'm sure I missed a lot of that, how many pages of report and, and two hour of a presentation, but yeah, that, I'm gonna end with that. And then I really am gonna run and get a cord, so I'll be right back there.
Believe me, I, I understand. I am, like I said, I'm about to go, go dark here in a moment. And I hope you can hear me. I'm, I'm working with my phone rather than the, the iPad, so I think it's on. Good comments, I, I agree. The report was outstanding, and well, certainly well done. Brought a lot of information to us, and I said it was a little concern at the outset, we might, might be more effective dividing this, but, but I think comments thus far have been terrific. One thing, I, I made a, a general comment, it was a paper some time ago about inclusionary, and the question was 20% versus 10%. I said, you know, we might actually find that we're going to be developing more, more units, you know, low-cost units at 10% rather than 20. If 20 is not generating any, 10% might be more, in fact. And it's not a simple math, you know, 10 times whatever the units are versus 20 times whatever the units are, yielding a, a number that may be deceiving to some degree. I happen to think that 10%, based on what we've seen thus far, is probably going to result in more net units to be seen. And I'd certainly be interested in, you know, planning, planning folks' discussion about that point. But I do think that just intuitively, it feels like it's probably gonna result in, in a better outcome for everyone. Comments have been made with regard to making the process easier and more expedient. I think that's the overlying principle that each person, each of the council members have touched on thus far. And it does seem like, you know, certainly the chamber has, and others have commented with regard to the process to make it as expeditions as possible. I think we'd all encourage that, and, and certainly from the final report standpoint, yes, we should have, have this as smooth as we can for the development of units, because we, let's face it, we, we haven't developed many. We'd be in the city, and oh, they're involved. And it would be beneficial to, as expressed by all council members thus far, have more, more units, living units available. DRB is a tough one. And, yeah, I was, I was on the planning commission as, as Kate and, and Councilmember Bushy. And at that time, it seemed like it was working okay, and there was some stumbling blocks. Developers would come, have to come back two, three times. But that seems like that's refined the summary. But I think that Kate is right with regard to the sequence. You know, we tried on several occasions, sequencing the planning commission first, followed by the DRB, and that seemed to be surprisingly beneficial in the, in the process cycle. So I think that that would be something we'd want to look at as well. I certainly want to thank Ethan for answering all the questions that were raised. And it was enlightening, at least to me, and I suspect the others as well. So let me, let me ask Paul, if I could, and anyone else who wishes to chime in, from the planning department. You've got to receive some input thus far. Paul, you had a recommendation that I frankly thought made some sense with the, the amount of material we've been faced with, presented to this evening. So Paul, give me some direction, and, and as you say it. And Jim, of course, Jim's not on my screen, but Jim, of course, where we might go from here.
Okay, yeah, because I see a little bit of a change from when we first started this discussion after closure of public comment, about perhaps taking these, these topic areas, separating them, and got, and coming back. I think the exercise of going through everyone's comments was very valuable. I think we got a lot out of that. And instead of us coming back individually with these topic areas, I think I'm getting the sense that we're probably gonna be in the position to proceed with some of the topic areas here. And I do want to qualify this, you know, when we proceed with all of this stuff, if we come back, we come back with code changes, which is a complete public process, again, for both the planning commission and the city council. So you'll have an opportunity to look at these again in a more granular level as we bring them forward. The one question is the, the DRB that I see still. So I think we may want to do a little more work on that. And we may come back with maybe some more discussion on this before we decide on how to proceed. But I think with the other topic areas, I think we can move forward with them incrementally. And Jim, I don't know what, if you want to make any comments about?
Yeah.
Yeah, Jim, maybe you can add.
Sure, thanks. Yeah, I think, Paul, that makes sense to me. One thing I want to make sure we do is don't lose momentum on this topic. So I'd love to be able to capture what we've heard tonight, and kind of show it back to the council, and start making progress towards those code changes. So if we can do that as early as the next meeting, I think that would be great. And, but we also want to acknowledge that this is, this is a lot, and it's, it's something the council's been working on for a long time. So I, I think we're good with what we have, and we'll, we'll try to package it, and then we'll also make sure that our staff report, the next time we present it, is, is five minutes or less, because you've heard it all tonight. So there's, we'll, we'll keep it short, and just kind of refer back to tonight's meeting for background.
And we'll hold you to that. So if it sounds like we're in the right place, at least at this moment, to be obviously advanced and amplified. So with that, is there a motion with regard to this matter? And I'm not sure, let's see, we could accept the report, is, would it be appropriate to accept the report, or table it until the next meeting for such acceptance? Sorry, I'm asking for your advice on this.
I, I think Jim's suggestion's a great one, because what we can do is, we can take what we've heard, condense it down to a much shorter report on, you know, what our next steps are gonna be, and then accept that second report when we bring it back.
Okay, is that acceptable by council members? It looks like it is. In which case, we'll, we'll go on to the, Mary Beth, you have, you have, it looks like you have a question.
Well, we have to do something. Do we continue the matter to the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So I move, we continue the matter to the next meeting. Staff to take such actions as we've discussed.
Correct. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, there's, there is a second roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
I did.
Thank you, John.
John.
And Councilmember Bushy?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Colin?
Hi.
Councilmember Gamlin?
Hi.
Eric Phillips?
I, the matter carries for zero. And I now have no agenda, but as I recall, that was the last agenda item, with no report on the special items. So unless there, there is a comment, we shall conclude the meeting. Are you okay with that?
For any council member comments, and then successaries and seek and some calendar, which there are no items on that agenda.
Right. Any council member comments or reports? Doesn't appear that there are any. In which case, we shall adjourn. And I still have 5%, so I'm, I'm good.
All right, everybody.
Thanks.
Bye.